As we finish off today.
Looking forward to a really good productive day, lots of good discussions with this time on the county manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. So, a couple of things. One, again, we will probably go right up until the time that we need to get out of the bus. So if you don't have your things with you, please make sure you get them on the first break so that we all are ready to go after that. Also, for council, I want to share that Jeannie has done some work overnight and so we'll circle back to your priority themes towards the end of the day today. So she was up working on that, which I very much appreciate. Also, if anyone has come in and has not, there are some cards over on the table there. If you get five cards, we're going to do some giveaways before the end of the day. And then today is going to be primarily about economic development. So Tiffany and Michelle are both here to walk you through what has been looked at in terms of economic development, all the amazing work that Tiffany has already done, bringing her skill set and her connections to Morrisville, which we appreciate. And then she and Michelle are also going to talk you through a conversation around the Go District zoning. So again, you have a couple of letters that came in either Thursday or Friday. I'm not sure if they were hand-delivered or how you got them, but I forwarded those to you electronically yesterday as well. And so we'll sort of pick up from there. But unless there are any questions, I'm going to turn over to Tiffany to get rolling.
All right. So good morning, everyone. I'm delighted to be here with you today. This is my first town council meeting. I have a little bit of time with you today and have to share some very important and interesting news and share a lot of progress in the overall economic development. And so during today's discussion, I will stop and take time for questions. And also, at the end of this session, there is an opportunity for council feedback. There are a couple of prompted questions and then time for more questions and answers as well. So today, I just want to talk a little bit about an overview of what we'll discuss. We'll talk about the mission and vision for economic development, some of our previous collaborations in the town's history of progress. Also, give a brief economic outlook, talk us a little bit about our current economic landscape. And before we dive into the economic landscape today, we'll do a SWOT analysis. That's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And give council an opportunity to share their thoughts and ideas on our community and where we are today. And also review progress for 2024. We have some metrics that are full year and some that will start from an October to December timeframe as well. And then we'll go into a high-level review of the 2023 economic development strategy that was developed by Kathleen Henry, consultant. And I have some recommendations for requirements for that particular strategy. And we'll dive a little deeper into recommendations for our action plan and implementation for that strategy as well. So first, I want to take a step back and just say, acknowledge all of the partners that have contributed to economic development in the town of Morrisville prior to me even getting here. Acknowledging the hard work that was done by the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, Wake County Economic Development, as well as our Kathleen Henry and our town leaders and town staff, many of, well, all of you in the room today. And just acknowledge that collaboration, that collaborative approach to economic development that we've already had in our community. And talk about, and we'll begin to talk about more proactive ways to grow that collaboration. So let's talk a little bit about our mission. I know this is very long, but it's important. I want the, it's literally every word, but I want to point out a couple of things here. From an economic development standpoint, our mission is to drive sustainable economic growth by prioritizing support for small businesses, attracting new industries as well, and strengthening existing businesses. It's important that we want to attract new businesses, but we also don't want to forget about our small businesses in the backbone of our community and make sure we're doing everything we can to provide support for them and our existing businesses. I'm a firm believer that word of mouth is one of the best ways to market your community. And with the support of our existing businesses that have continued to thrive in Morrisville, that's the way that we could raise our visibility. And we also want to focus on smart growth and infrastructure development and continues to foster innovation. And so with this mission, all of these things will continue to support a thriving ecosystem. So let's talk about our vision. This is very important. Our vision is to continue building on our Morrisville success, making it an even more thriving and innovative community where diverse industries grow as a sea. And through strong partnerships and collaboration, we aim to create a dynamic economy that attracts investment, fosters smart growth, and ensures a vibrant and sustainable future for all businesses and residents. And one thing that's important, as we look towards the future, we talk about now, we look towards the future, we have to talk about the history, we have to talk about where we've been in order to get a better understanding of where we're trying to go. And so let's talk about our history of progress. I took the liberty to go back and research some of the announcements that we've had in Morrisville. I was able to work with Wake County Economic Development and go back to 2019 and look at some data. Since 2019, there's been 28 company announcements. With those 28 companies, we've announced 2,409 jobs and over $303.9 million in capital investment. And so that's very substantial. And so my goal, my role is to grow on that. I mean, we saw yesterday we've got some expenses and so my job is to help us bring in some, bring in some money so we can break through. So it works, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm sorry, do you want like questions as we go or you want to get through a little?
I would move through, but I'll take a second.
I just want to know, out of those 28 companies that we announced, how many cases, announcements that we, that where the companies ended up coming to Morrisville? Or are they companies that we announced and then later changed their minds or lost funding?
So all of those companies are here except for one that now is included in that and they're, it hasn't started yet. I remove Invicta from that, from those numbers.
Thank you.
And to add on to that progress, we've made significant investment in Town Center and looking forward to Town Center being a staple, a destination place for our community as we grow and build that downtown presence. And we've also seen new developments and redevelopments. And so when we think about McCrimmon Parkway, that gateway overlay district, we've seen investments from our private developer community, its sparks and pathways. We've seen redevelopment where we've envisioned the former Invicta and now we have this Stitch, which is a thriving place where we can locate life sciences, businesses, and other target industries in a redeveloped mall, which is one of the best adaptive reuse projects I've seen in our region. And not to, not to mention some of the recommendations and award, rewards that we've received, awards we've received. An All-American City in 2021, top rankings from Money Magazine, one of the best places to live in America. And also named by Fortune as one of the best places to live with your families. And by Wada, we've continued to rank high for business climate and entrepreneurial environment. And last but definitely not least, the 2023 economic development strategy. The investment that the town made by furthering that investment into economic development, researching and coming to the conclusion that it's very important that we build our own presence in economic development so that we said this state should adapt and create an economic development department. And so we talked a little bit about our history, some progress that we've made. I'm going to stop right now and take a little bit of time to do a national economic outlook. And then I'll talk a little bit on a world level. Myself and Giselle recently had the opportunity to attend the 2025 launch economic forecast that was held by the Greater Raleigh Chamber of Commerce, which gave a highlight for Wake County and the state of North Carolina. And the economist there was Tom Bargain, who's the vice president for the, excuse me, the Deserde Bank of Richmond. And some of the feedback that we heard there from the economists was that the U.S. economy is projected to grow between 2.5% and 3%. And while inflation is moderate, it still remains, it's moderate, but it remains above target. And so from a, when you think about it from a local standpoint, how does that impact us locally? Well, our labor market continues to be healthy. We have low unemployment. And so in Morrisville, our unemployment rate is 2.8, which is below the 3.1 for Wake County and our MSA and below 3.7 for the state of North Carolina currently. But even though that, you know, that labor market is low, we do see that some sectors will continue to increase in their hiring. Now, on another standpoint, you know, consumers are a little reluctant to spend because we see there is inflation. They're a little more price-conscious. And so just trying to keep in mind that the money is, when you go to the grocery store, we know who goes to the grocery store is spending more in groceries. And so consumers are a little more price-conscious. And then there also remains some uncertainty regarding geopolitical factors. I mean, we do have, we have a new administration and there are some questions of how some policies may potentially impact us on a state, regional, and local level. And from that meeting, there were some recommendations that were made to our businesses. The first one that I thought was key was agility. Businesses need to be adaptable and prepared for a range of economic conditions and policy changes. Collaboration. Collaboration between businesses, government, and educational institutions is essential. For example, to address workforce needs and foster innovation. I think, I'll take a minute and I'll stop right there on collaboration and talk about workforce. I think one of the things about the state of North Carolina and particularly our region, we have a very strong workforce. We have 58 community colleges in the state of North Carolina, one of the strongest workforce development networks in the nation. And just in our back door, we have the Wake Tech RTP campus. And so working with capital area workforce, our local community colleges, and the local high schools, we have an opportunity to go in with employers and hear their needs and speak to them about what curriculum they're looking to be built at these universities and even at these local colleges to kind of help address some of these workforce needs early on so they can even help build their talent pipeline. And I do apologize if I know my voice is cracking. I'm going to wear this up. If I need to repeat anything, just stop at that point. And last but definitely not least, informed decision making. Businesses need to stay informed about economic trends, customer needs, energy, and workforce dynamics. And I'll stop right now and I'll take any questions regarding the economic outlook, but I will.
No, I think, can we get presentations like the ones that you go because I'm pretty much interested to personally get educated as to where we are heading towards because I have a lot of conversations with Michelle and others. When we sit on the dials, we have no clue what's going on outside, you know? Even from a developers' point of view, what is the trends from, you know, from economic outlook trend, you know, till someone from Pathway Collins said advanced banking, I had no clue what was going on there. So our, I think I can offer myself, my knowledge is a little bit when it comes to these kind of things, but it would be in a better advantage for the council that if we are educated in a quarterly basis on some things or get access to these meetings to attend or get presentations, it would be very beneficial for us.
Thank you. And I'll touch bases on that also a little bit throughout the presentation. What the plan is to report on a quarterly basis on economic development, as well as we will provide an annual report on the overall economic development activity. And as information comes to me that I think that the council would definitely appreciate, such as economic trends and forecasts, we'll share that information with you. And there's opportunities, opportunities to attend some of these forums and events.
So what, what do you think is likely to be the effect? I, I mean, we're talking like businesses and manufacturing and what do you think is likely to be the effect if the, if grants and such for green manufacturing become limited or completely go away at the federal level? So how do you take that kind of thing into account when you're deciding what businesses to target?
Well, I think, I think there's still going to be a room and base for that because it's a part of advanced manufacturing and advanced technologies. When you think about clean technology as a whole, it may slow down the rates at which companies want to locate and spend, but it doesn't necessarily change the fact that they're still interested in locating.
From a consumer standpoint?
From a, well, from a consumer standpoint, we're still going to be in the market to receive, to receive that product. I mean, as a company decides to grow and whether a company will go there and how bad they're, how quickly they want to come to market and make their decisions. And so I don't, I think from a standpoint, we may need to be a little more creative, some on a local or state level on how we can recruit, recruit businesses, how we incentivize. Years ago, there were incentives like the Article 3J tax credits that actually gave some incentives for some green industry businesses. So some of those things may come back, but again, that may be at a state level. So where federal assistance may not be provided from a regional or from a state standpoint, the state government may be interested in that if they're still.
What's been your experience in the North Carolina level with the willingness to explore grants and other incentives for sustainability-based businesses?
For specific target, target industries?
Yeah.
So if you look back at the time when the state focused on recruiting data centers, state was intentional about reviewing policies and looking at ways to provide incentives to attract those businesses. I think as long as it meets the overall goal of the state and the type of businesses that they want to see in the communities and we, and of course, we're right for that because we have the talent. We're in strategic location. I think we, the state, and I will speak for everyone, but I think there are people that would be intentional about, intentional about finding ways to be creative and, I think.
They're probably in that customer perspective.
I want to say, did you guys have any more to add? So I think it's going to be great, everything quarterly stuff. So glad that you're on board and we have another person helping you to help us keep the pulse of what's going on in the area. There are already lots of opportunities, Raleigh Chamber, economic development. There's lots of opportunities to get out there. And I think Morrisville really does really well in showing that we're interested in that by attending a lot of those. So that's a great source for information. Town manager has been really good about sharing out opportunities for us to attend things like that every week. So that's been really helpful. So one thing about the top on agility, I think as a government, we also need to be really agile and working towards things. And I'm so glad that you're on board because you can help us take the Cathy report and also help us with our branding, about what we want to be. Like the Morrisville Chamber is small but mighty. And now that we have our own economic development, I think Morrisville can be just plain mighty. So I think that's going to really change the future. So, so glad that we have this presentation and we're going to collaborate on it.
Hi, Tiffany. I am excited about the economic outlook report that we saw at Raleigh Chamber. Are you also going to be attending events at the Cary Chamber or other municipalities? Or is the Raleigh Chamber one of the, you know, links that we're going to have going forward more prominently than other areas?
No, I'm very intentional about attending any event, you know, within our region or in our state that can provide insight on economic outlook. And I think one of the things, and you'll probably hear me say a lot throughout the day, is collaboration and partnership because while this is Morrisville and Morrisville is amazing and great, I think we can do more if we partner and we raise our visibility by partnering with some of, some people within our region. So I think it's always really good to sit at the table with others to hear what's going on in their communities and get feedback because hey, maybe if it's not working for them, I think, you know, we can tweak it and it can work better with the Morrisville things of that nature. But I think anytime, so I also work very closely with NCEEA, which is the North Carolina Economic Development Association. And so they'll be holding some forums like this throughout the year as well. And so in that area, you'll have all economic developers throughout the state coming together, sharing economic outlook and insights. And so I think it's just important to participate in that.
So I don't know if you noticed, but I was the one that put economic resiliency on my little apple, I believe it was. And I'm from a state, most people know, Michigan, where there has been severe economic tragedy for decades. So economic resiliency means that we have a broad base of different kinds of industry, different types of education, different types of related industries to weave the fabric of a strong economy, both locally as well as statewide. So I'm very grateful that Morrisville is doing so well and that we are in a great state that is very supportive of businesses. One thing that I find challenging is that our neighbors are also great and we are constantly competing for, you know, new companies or keep retaining companies within our borders. And that is something that I focus on is how do we remain competitive yet partner? So that careful balance is very important and looking at our code to make sure that our code is friendly yet respectful of our current and future businesses. But there's things that we can do as a government to ensure that we are remaining competitive and we might not be aware, as Mayor Potem said, about how that climate changes. But we're looking to you and also you providing us opportunities for education on what we need to do in order to remain economically resilient.
I think it was the mayor and council member Ralph.
I want to let those two have the first chance. Once, I think, right?
No, all I was going to, I have a couple of ideas, but I'll show them at the end after the SWAT houses as we all go through. But I mean, I think all I want to say is that I think to pick up on what everybody said when the SWAT was starting, I think that one of the things that we have to do is try to figure out what makes us really unique and different. I think our differentiation from a lot of our neighbors who are regular, which is how we made those five or SWAT cities and just different things like that, how we can couple that branding perspective to really make people know that if they want to start a company and they want to grow here, then they can come to Morrisville because we really haven't had an identity that way. And we know we're creating a lot of life sciences and advanced manufacturing. I think it's a real opportunity to really drive, make our, enable our SWAT businesses and our startup companies thrive. And then the second thing that I'll talk about later today is our international connection, particularly with India. Mayor Potem and I, I know so much, along with Mayor and everybody, all of the connections we have with people that have great connections there. So that could be a really unique partnership opportunity for, for investment, multinational companies that want to invest. I know they come from Morrisville, or President of the airport, things like that. Particularly the state of North Carolina, which is where most of our community is from, at least in Morrisville. So I mean, the following is redevelopment in terms of just, you know, looking at the block and the community that we can do of taking something like what they have in the frontier and having something like that in Morrisville, like a place where people can really thrive and get together and congregate. It's amazing what they've built out there. So just a couple of highlights, but I appreciate us having you on board and looking forward to a great session.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think one thing I was thinking since we, everyone's saying, we have no pressure on you, okay? I still remember the last council meeting, you know, we admitted to get more person and we are really happy to see you in person here. And I understand we have rally chambers, we understand this one, but I think it would be good to have our own kind of like, achieve like chambers event, like a town event that basically showcases and focuses on who we are and what we are. You know, it's good to go and sit on other meetings, but it would be good where you can use examples of how Morrisville has been successful. That is what is important to the other regions and not going and sitting in rally chambers, which is fine, you know, and other things. And I think for that, we have allocated funds for you to have those kind of hearings so that it is, you're not constrained under those things where you, these are the places where we have to focus. We have to get a fortunate to come and give a presentation of how they're able to adapt, you know, like that pathway, like how, you know, by collaboration we did it. So the success stories have to come out and we need serogets. Then only it helps try. We can get all the data, but if Morrisville does not start its own, then, you know, we are just a lagging indicator of someone to follow.
I definitely, I definitely agree with your comments there. And I think, well, I know we had the opportunity to do that with Christie, our new president at the chamber, and I've worked together. Another event that we work on for the economic forecast for Morrisville. So for, you know, for our own town. And because the goal is to raise the visibility of Morrisville so that we're not in the shadows of other communities. And so that's very important. And how do we go about, we go about doing that? And I guess right now, while we work on this, is a good time to kind of segue into an opportunity to get your feedback on our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Uh, Councilmember Fender, I think, had a comment. No, that's okay.
Actually, step in front of that. Sorry, I got some more.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments and, but first, I apologize for being late. I was sleeping very deeply when TJ called. But just piggybacking off of what a couple other people said. Yes, we, we do have to compete with Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia at times, but they don't have what we have here in the area with having Duke, UNC, and NC State right here. And on top of that, I would love to go back in time to the 50s and shake those men's hand who had the foresight to, to set aside the land and start Research Triangle Park because that has been huge for this. I mean, that has been monumental for our state to have that right there. And someone yesterday said Morrisville is unique and we are because we're right between RTP and the airport. The one thing, though, that Morrisville doesn't have is land. So we cannot do, like where Holly Springs is. So we cannot do like what Holly Springs is doing with bringing in Amgen and Fujifilm. But I've also seen, you know, I'm from one county over, McDowell County, which used to be thriving with textiles and furniture. And even with my own brother, who used to work for Ethan Allen in Old Ford. He moved before they closed down. But then was most recently working for Evergreen Packaging in Canton when they closed down a couple of years ago. So the fact that we are diversifying in this, this area is a huge benefit for the state overall. So I'm not sure where I was going with that. But, I mean, yeah, I think we still compete with other states, but we still have very unique advantages that those states don't have.
Now, I just got echo what everybody said Tiffany and really thrilled you're here because I think, and I've said this, I'm not sure I've said this in front of you yet, but I've said this repeatedly over years and years, that our greatest opportunity isn't our redevelopment. And I think we're ripe for redevelopment. So the fact that you're here to help, like Sati said, look for those trends and get ahead of stuff as best we can. I know, it's like looking at crystal ball, I know. But to have somebody focused on that is gonna be helpful. Because I will tell you, when I first started at council, our, our big industry was IT. Everything was IT related. And then, you know, this, this life science all of a sudden bubbled up and now here we are. So I think it's important that we be really agile and flexible and take advantage of the trends that are out there so that we can stay economically viable. So that's just my two cents.
We've been talking about redevelopment for years, it's been hitching Stephen, way back when. But a couple of things, like the collaboration we were talking about, like Regional Transportation Alliance, RTA, they have lots of meetings. Everyone come up with a list. And I often see like Towne and Cary as one of the sponsors. So in order to play in this sandbox in the region of our game, I know we're talking about receiving money for sponsorships, but being at the table of those things, I think will also be helpful. Had a really good conversation with Scott Levittan the other day about competition versus collaboration. He said, if we all put on our Adrian Cole hat, because she's Raleigh, but she thinks regionally, whenever anyone comes into our region, we all benefit. So that's really a good way to look about things. I thought that was really good. And we already have some great opportunities to talk about ourselves, like in the state of Morrisville. But I imagine that you're gonna really have a real impact into that agenda. I think you're gonna be talking a lot during our next state of Morrisville about the good things we've done or are planning to do, things like that. I love the idea of adding like economic development presentations in addition to that throughout the year. I think that's gonna really help us a lot. And Morrisville Chambers are really up their game. I talked about Small to Mighty, they've already had some life sciences networking events and things like that. So that collaboration and partnership with Christie, I think that's really gonna make a big difference for Morrisville. Really up our visibility in the region. So those are some of the things I want to share. And Councilmember Ralph, that's another problem.
Oh, no.
Yes, so I'm thrilled that we're reaching out to life sciences and I'm happy, of course, that these businesses are choosing to look at here. But I'm, I'm concerned about putting all our eggs in that life science basket. And to Councilmember Fender's point, you know, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, I remember my parents coming to North Carolina to look at furniture from New Jersey. North Carolina was the furniture, the furniture craftsmanship capital of the country, right? And then, you know, and then somebody said it's, that it was IT. And great, we got all these IT businesses in and then COVID and now IT people are working at home and real estate is empty. And so I, you know, I think that I would love to see, you know, definitely life science is great. Life science events are fine for the chamber, I suppose. But, but I would like to see us diversify and be really forward looking in our, in our analysis of the, what's on the horizon, like what businesses are next. You know, what businesses, like it's, it's hard to do biofarm from home, you know? So, you know, company, companies and industries that, you know, it's not a crystal ball, I get that. But like companies and industries that are gonna continue to need highly skilled people in office. Like they're, you know, I, I guess my point is just I'd love to see us diversifying our, our base a little bit more as we redevelop.
I think you made some very good points and I'll talk a little bit about it in more detail as I talk about some requirements, some recommendations for requirements that I suggested for the strategic, for the strategic plan. Because I'm, to your point, I do believe that we need to focus more intentionally on all of our target industries and also be more inclusive in the target industries that you identify. And specifically like life sciences, because life sciences is more than just bio manufacturing. There are many aspects of our underlife sciences that I think we have opportunity to, you can say unlock, absolutely, central.
Yeah.
So we'll talk a little bit more about that.
And I would also just love to see, this is sort of tangential, I guess, but I would also love to see. Because there is a lot of talent in that, in those HBCUs. And I would really like to see, you know, either targeted recruitment fairs, if we work with the chamber on that, and just us playing up a little bit more the fact that maybe, because yes, we have Duke, we have NC State, we have UNC is the third one. Yes, we do have those. We also have, Wake Tech is amazing and turning out highly qualified people in cybersecurity and other really relevant fields. And the HBCUs are doing the same thing. And I'd really like to see us kind of talking about the whole town face. That's important to me.
What is that, HBCU?
I'm just saying.
What is an HBCU?
Like UNC.
I sounded like a B instead of a B. Sorry about that.
North Carolina A&amp;T.
Try not to use this many acronyms.
That would be impossible.
So we will take this opportunity to do a SWAT activity. And so each of you in front of you, you already have posted notes and we're gonna take about 10 minutes to identify some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And then you could just place your posted note on the board here. And we'll do a quick review, but I promise you, I will have a more detailed document provided for you after council retreat that'll give you a synopsis of the SWAT analysis here today.
Really just from the economic development viewpoint?
From the economic development viewpoint. And when you think about the town of Morrisville, what do you think our strengths are? Our weaknesses and our opportunities and threats? And you know, economic development encompasses so many things. So think about holistically, think about our community. And I've taken the liberty to.
Click on the screen?
I may, I'm surprised.
Click on the screen, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to do it. There we go. To go ahead and kind of get us started in identifying some of the strengths. Our strategic location near Raleigh RTP and major transport. Our access to talent pool from nearby universities. And just as Councilmember Rabadi was talking about, we're not just close to, you know, NC State, not just close to UNC, Chapel Hill. We also have North Carolina Central University, Shaw University, Meredith. So all those universities within a short 25, 30 minute drive distance. And Wake Tech, and Durham Tech. Some of our weaknesses, lack of readily developable land. I mean, because we have very limited land. Our town center is under development. It's not complete. I mean, you know, you might look at that as a weakness. But the great thing here is it will be under development. So that's also an opportunity. One threat, increased vacancy rates in some of our areas. Think about perimeter. Another potential threat is changes in tax laws, regulations and trade policies that can impact economic growth. So so, those are some of the things I think, to think about. Those are those outside threats that could potentially, you know, threaten or have an impact on our community.
So could you clarify what we're trying to do? We just wanted to.
So I want you, from an economic development standpoint, think about the town of Morrisville and think about what our strengths are. Think about our weaknesses, any opportunities and threats. Because I want, I want your feedback, because this one will kind, will help shape any additional recommendations for our action plan on how we're gonna implement the economic development strategy.
There's two knee sneezes. I think we just forget.
I'm sorry. I feel like I'm just coughing up whatever.
Oh Tiffany, 75% of the room is sick.
My ears are plugged, obviously, since I can't hear acronyms. I could go on and on and on.
Yeah, seriously. Like, I don't think I have enough postings. That's what you need right there.
Yes, that is. It's all there. Oh, I do. Yeah, it's the heart, right? It's my heart. I like sit.
Can't read your.
I don't know. I love it. I love it.
Strengths are easy. The strengths are easy, but I tell them to put them together into a unique value prop. They're not, they're just words.
In what makes Morrisville's hedgehog concept for economic development? What can we do that no one else can?
We have a council meeting Tuesday. She has a training Thursday. I'm gonna put a shield up around this table.
Would anyone like a coffee?
That sounds dangerous.
So we take. That's very vertical. This has to be U and idiotic tariff and trade policies?
Yeah, that could be anybody.
I mean, I said, actually, I said the same thing, but I just.
It doesn't require a lot of land.
Oh, that's cute.
Yes, it's vertical.
To the vertical.
Yeah.
It's an aspect of agro bio farming, you know, for the lifestyle.
Yeah.
Disney does it.
Oh, Disney does it. God, they're so good.
Have you been to land, you know, the land?
Yeah. And on all their parking garages down, even down there lately, on all the parking garages at Disney Springs, they have bio walls. So there's just plants in every brick, all the way up.
There's a bio wall in DTW, the airport.
They have a bio wall.
Shouldn't we probably put a bio wall?
Yeah, so, so tell her so that she can change the video of it, not. But she's already saying it has to be.
There's a lot of stuff about, people just aren't doing it.
No, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta point her. That's the only thing I can do. You can top all of them. You can top all of them, what's she looking at?
It's like the. I mean, there's companies.
Yes. Okay, but, oh, yeah, I said, decades, yeah, mandatory, mandatory, and also, I think people should use Legos more. I'm just, in general.
I love Legos.
I think we should have somebody.
I worked on a project for my company doing vertical farming, but it was at the small scale.
They call them those little businesses around cottage retail.
Up in Milwaukee, the Alabamian. They were gonna install it and it got thrown cold.
Milwaukee's cold, you don't like going to Milwaukee.
But I do.
Did everyone have an opportunity to put their.
Oh, yeah, I was completely aware of my home.
I thought you couldn't sleep.
I couldn't.
Yeah.
I know. All week, we've been. What was on Tuesday or Monday, you were up at like thirty AM?
Marathon.
But there are a couple of big, full farming, whole scale.
Like proper one?
Yeah.
There's a lot of food, so, yeah, fertile farms or beauty farms would be good.
Okay, everyone. Do we have everyone back in?
I can.
So, what I wanna do, again, thank you all for your feedback. What I wanna do is take a couple minutes just to identify some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that. Oh, okay, oh, continue, no problem, that we've identified here. And highlight some of those, and if anyone has a particular one, they wanna make sure that I highlight, please let me know.
I'm really interested in the vertical farming and other, that's something everyone would have thought of, but what other kinds of industries like that are cutting edge and that we can target?
So, so, vertical farming is, for example, under like agro-bio-farming, which is under the life sciences umbrella. So, to that point, when we think about life sciences, in a lot of the information that I've seen, we position ourselves for biomanufacturing, and that's just, that's a small piece. But when we think about the entire umbrella, if we look at it from a more inclusive approach to marketing ourselves for our target industry, that's another emerging industry, vertical farming. And Councilwoman Fender, you've got experience with it.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that I think vertical farming is very well suited for Mooresville in this area because it doesn't take a large footprint, it can just be in a warehouse. I mean, it doesn't take a large footprint because it's vertical, and you don't, it's just in a warehouse, and we're all, you know, we already have agenda and bear food science in the area. Of course, they're doing more hybrids and things, so it kinda is a blend of that type of thing. So, I think it's very well, there are already companies that are doing it for production, for sale.
And the, you know, the manufacturing is contained, you know? It's not where we think from the old days, smokestack, pollution, and everything is contained within the environment of the building itself. It doesn't necessarily have to call for extremely high ceiling heights, so we can use some of the, redevelop some of the existing properties that have been vacant. But again, it's a, it's a growing market, and when you think about a community that does have women that live in, that's an opportunity to contribute there. As well, was there, was there anything else regarding Councilwoman Fender?
No, I just.
So, along with that, I mean, we know, I did know a lot of our strengths that have borders to both isolation, close to RDP. You know, how, but again, someone said, until we. Councilwoman Fender, can you please share with me exactly what you said again, I like it.
I, I just said that we, you know, we know our strengths, but until we take those strengths and crystallize them into a unique value prop that we can share with people, we can know them all we want. But I said, you know, if we can like, put all of that into a one-liner that we can share out, then, then you've got something.
Innovation from address.
Or something like that.
And have a good word into action, right? And, and so, again, some of those strengths, location, support for businesses in our community, Asian population workforce, schools, willingness to provide and centers to target industries, our small business community, hotels close to RTP, vertical town, local locations, central to the triangle, and diverse, some of our weaknesses, transportation, housing mix, affordability, lack of unique value proposition statement, laser focus on life sciences, lack of relative office space for small businesses, for example, for tier, landlocked, better road infrastructure needed, limited tax and authority, and no transit. A lack of adequate supply of older, arid, fat family, rental housing. Some of the opportunities that were identified, tar, to target vertical farming, target clean energy, partner, partner with Wake Dell, is that Wake?
Development.
And then partner with the Chamber, our town center is seen as an opportunity, great. We have redevelopment opportunities, and then opportunity to further support small business, an adaptive UDO. And last, lastly here, some of the threats. One threat identified as not diverse enough, industry-based, tariff, office vacancy, housing prices, loss of authority by boyfriend, general assembly, and opposition to change and opposition to growth. I'm trying to read this. Surrounding municipalities who do not share our collaborative mindset and. Tariff and trade policies that build.
So, what's the opposition to change and opposition to growth?
That was me.
Oh, who has that opposition?
I think, I hear that from the public a lot.
Oh.
And I think that's a threat to us as we continue to try to evolve and change and take advantage of the trends, and I don't think the public, I think we have an opportunity to educate the public and ourselves, quite frankly, I think us too, on why, why the advantages of having a really thriving and successful business community. When we talk about the fact that we're looking for the revenue from our business community to help us fund and offset, fund a lot of our projects and offset the need to tax our residents, by and our business community, quite frankly, and so, you know, I think, I think education along those lines for us and for the community is gonna be critically important.
Were there any others that you want me to point out here that I didn't mention?
Well, just two things, one, of course, I'm biased, but. Fortunately, I have experience, two engineers, people that are here, that have experience in IBM, technology experience, to be, you know, more than probably any council in the state. So, I think that's really good in terms of our team and what that means for our brand, what we sell, we connect with well. The other thing, I wanted to stick a moment to answer something that Mayor Colley suggested about wanting to be better than anyone else, or what's our hedgehog concept? I think a lot of people are obsessed with digitization and technology, because there is a connection between technology and automation, and most success of that with the economy. You know, if you look at India, for example, the whole economic blueprint was based on digital India. And today, they went from nine economies in the world to three, and they're predicted to be number one. And they went, you know, all automated with payment systems, AI companies, A1, unicorn startups, right? And so, for Mooresville, that could be a real differentiator, not only for the tech, but the life science, to say that we're the most innovative area, you know, town in the state for that, so that people know that that's where they come. Instead of going to Durham, instead of going to Raleigh or Cary, they come here. And right now, I think that like, when you look at the Raleigh-Durham startup, the Triangle startup, every major triangle or program they have for innovation, Mooresville's always wiped out. Nothing's ever held in Mooresville. I mean, the Deloitte, if you're in our capital, typically, that's a Raleigh foundation, or everything's downtown Durham. So, I think, but until we have something that we do better than anyone else, then they're just, you know, look at us as, well, it's Mooresville, we're gonna go to the capital, that's just my idea. People may not agree with me, but I, I'm convinced that, just because of the, the ecosystem that, that they're protesting seeds. I mean, you know, so.
Well, Steve, remember when Deborah Ross went to India, she went, I think she went to Hyderabad? And she, she visited a, an entrepreneurship, like an entrepreneurship hub. And people have ideas, they can use computers, they have a certain amount of like, equipment for them, they can, you know, so they can tie up their ideas, and I don't know if they rented or if they, I don't know what to do, but, but the thing is, it's a hub, and you know that you can go there, and you can, you can use, you can, you can take advantage of equipment and expertise that you don't have, and would be too expensive for you to acquire. And I thought that was brilliant, she said that some of the ideas coming out of there are gonna revolutionize India. And I thought, that would be such a cool thing for us to have. So, first thing, is, is, because, like, furniture doesn't come through. Well, I mean, okay, I don't need, I don't need furniture, it may be that they have, you know, telecommunication equipment and computers and, not the digital equipment, I, I don't need most of that stuff, so I don't use it. But this was, this was like a place outfitted, like, like that place that's in the Sam's Club now, where you could just go in and use their lab, and you could do your thing in their lab. And that is a really, that was a really forward-thinking concept, because there's a lot of good ideas that just can't get traction because people can't get money, and without money, they can't get the equipment they need or the space they need or whatever. So, that's just, I don't know, I just, I just think like, one giant idea coming out of Mooresville would really put us on. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, maybe you said this, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry, but, one of our weaknesses, and I think it's important to, to think about our weaknesses, so we can obviously improve and be better, we can be more nimble when it comes to these. Is that, is that, I have a question up there, weaknesses?
Uh, maybe, I do, maybe the, I don't know, but I do not see it, but I don't know if it will. I mean, instead of, you know, I think we sometimes take too long. And I'm not, I'm not faulting either, I'm, I'm faulted counsel, staff, all of us as a group.
No, we can all work this for sure.
We take too long, and, you know, the, the, the business community watches, you know, everything we do, they know what we're doing and how long we're taking and what we're saying and what, they're watching. And I think that, that sends a message out there then to the other bus, businesses. And, you know, if we're taking too long and we're cashing over stuff too long, they're gonna move on. I mean, they're gonna go to a community that's more open and willing to, to work with them. So, I think we need to be mindful of that, and again, I'm not, it's not a fault on anybody, I'm talking about me too.
What about, oh, sorry, so Teesh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think, just piggybacking, a couple of things, like, what Steve started, and is about, what is our, you know, frontier is there, so we, you know, the, people don't understand what frontier is, especially if you're a start of business, they'll give you a collaboration space for the first two years at a very low rate. Then, the key is you have to open up an office that you're not even campus. That is the carrier that basically comes with it. So, we can't be frontier because we can't provide the next half as part of the hookup to, you know, be and do it. But there should be something that we should be able to provide, which is unique, and, and it's not something you can hash it out, but I think we all need to sit down, and, and I have, I'm fundamentally having a lot of flash in my mind when we start saying, we say we are a small town feel, okay? And I get the word small town feel, but with all the things that are going on, and talking about vertical farming and this and all kinds of stuff, where is Mooresville going towards? You know, and then we have changed that messaging to the public, okay? It is, but we are going towards this trend is very important because we send mixed signals. We are cash-strapped when I look at our taxes, you know, basis and all kinds of things, we are only, we are fortunate to have fifty-five percent of the revenue coming from commercial and to suffice forty-five percent of our tax. But the trend of how it is going is, is very difficult, unless we change our mindset. Otherwise, it will be hard for our residents going into the future. We have to do something, like example redevelopment. Most of the things I'm hearing currently, redevelopment, they wanna go working more. And then, you know, just, I won't, I'm not saying what is right or wrong, when the T O A P, oh, we don't need so many floors, we need less, this one. So, a, as a person, I have a feeling, but as a trend, what is it I think? It is where I need a direction as to what, how, how do we move forward? Because these are the things, like, I cannot force my individual hard process when I'm looking for the better way of the time.
I can sort of figure out some of this was saying, it's important for us to be agile. The structure of government, however, is to be deliberate and not quite plodding, but it's not designed to be agile. So, we need to be really intentional about trying to be Mooresville, and that's why a lot of people have chambers, because they can be more agile, they just have to get bored quickly, they don't have ordinances and things like that. So, I think that we demonstrated in the past that we're responsive, like, when we made the shift on the premium to life sciences, and we're gonna be discussing manufacturing, so, I agree with you completely, because I'm more of a fly-as-you-go type of guy personally, but that's not how groups and government entities work. So, we do need to be intentional about being able to react faster, so.
I agree.
I think I'm trying to add to what you were saying.
I think there's a, there's a happy need.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I, there's a, yeah, there's a reason government is slow, because you, you have to be intentional and you have, it's to be good stewards of the public's money, so that, that, I get that, but sometimes I think we go beyond that. That's my point.
But I also think that, I think it's important that the, because as we say, you know, developers and businesses that are located over there, I think they learn a lot from those deliberations, like the, I mean, I think the Popwast thing is actually a really good example, because did that take very long or did it shut up? Probably it did, but I do think that we also. But I do think that we also sent a message to the development community. And even businesses that look here about what we're looking for. Like we, you know, we want sustainability impact in our, in our projects. If you're doing a project, we, we don't want to hear it unless you, you're including a fourth housing component. Like, I think that, and as far as, I'm not exactly sure, truthfully, how that translates into the larger business scheme, like somebody coming in to do it. Because I feel like that all happens at a level way above us, and then they just come and say, you can tax incentives. And we say, hell yeah, we will, and then, and then it's all like, done. But, but I do, like, for those projects, I think, I think we should be sending strong messages about the types of projects that we do and don't want. And our messaging should be that we want projects that are going to be good for our community, good for, good for the planet as much as possible. And like, that we want to support green initiatives, we want to support, you know, like that, to me, is a really important part of messaging, because, you know, like, we want a coal factory that wants to relocate to North Carolina, to pass this on by, you know? And, and we don't want, we don't want like, you know, a carbon capture. But, you know, but vertical farming, like now that I know it, yeah, I want, like, I want it yesterday, so, you know.
Yeah, and I think, just, I think that brings up a very good point. I, I feel we should revisit our incentive policy that we do. We do one person, if the little council is there, and we can throw it all apart if you want to do me building. And then add one more person or something like that, so that, that gives them opportunity to think about it. Um, not necessarily, you know, you know, if they want, they can apply to have an incentive to do it.
So you're saying, I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up? So you're saying, so I can answer you, so you're saying revisit the incentive policy and add additional incentives?
No, I'm not saying additional alternatives for incentives, if they want to have like, you know, underscore consumer, you know, or something like that. Like, you know, we are putting in a U D O, but U D O is more of, you have, you know, like kind of a thing here when you're coming in. Like, for example, the simple construction, they said they, they live in need and they're insured for them. That is their goal, they're doing it. Uh, but if you have those options for, like, most of the European companies, they like doing that on the space, then say you have this, they may pick on that as one of the incentives. So I don't know how much money we have in trend, but that's, that's definitely an idea that's kind of at, at incoming itself.
No, it's Victor, Heather.
Using her placard, is that, I thought we were. Depends. So the role of government is to provide safety nets, you know, and services that's relevant to the community. And I do think a government can be adaptive, but in order to be resilient, we have to have vision and we have to set the table so that we can invite the right guests to our table. And, um, one of the best business cases that I picked out often is Holly Springs, North Carolina. Dixie Earth was a phenomenal man. And he convinced his council to switch up their downtown, to set aside land, to develop businesses, to go invite businesses and show them a field of dreams, and they came. Now, that is having vision and tenacity. And he's gotten money secured by, he brought in phenomenal businesses, you know, life sciences and healthcare industry. And he had just a very, not even a, a real downtown, but he made it happen, working with council, working with staff, working with the state. We have to do that. We can't just say, oh, we're going to be adaptive, oh, I want this one industry, I want that industry. We need to say, how do we reimagine Mooresville? Set that table and then figure out ways through our U D O, through our partnerships and our connections, how do we get there? Because if we just think small, we're only going to get small. That's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Well, as I said, it's walk the talk too.
Yes.
If you, we can set up all these policies and put all this stuff down on paper, but if we're not implementing or, or walking that talk, it's all for nothing, so, I don't know.
Hey guys, do we need to see one of ours? Because that makes no trouble asking. But we're, it's not a video, do we need to please?
What is, is what I'm saying, though?
I mean, we know who everyone is.
Not everybody knows who we are.
Can we keep mixing up the instincts?
The one, the one, just a couple of things, the other thing, actually, I worry in terms of our advances, we often forget that ten percent of all, like, public companies, like, we're, we're years ago, forty, fifty, almost. I think that's a really good deal, you know, because these big companies have a lot of really great minds that work there. I think they're, they're, they're passions, you need a lot of sound of it. Well, we have a lot of really well-known people that, like, the God, they call them the Godfather of startups, Scott Lindo. Uh, he's the only guy who can look around his founding four companies and say, oh, he's a graduate. He ran Chandler by his own store. And that was a big thing, is he started one called Tweeter Fund. So he's had a lot of success with, uh, he lives in Cary, but he's had a lot of success with investing in small businesses that had like a million dollars or less. And those companies are actually not going to venture capital and exit very quickly. He does a lot of this with his investors, investors at Ruckus. It'd be really nice, and he has a connection in Mooresville, because he ran a company. But I feel like when he was in Mooresville, it was just basically land, and people came to work. And he wasn't really engaging in Mooresville. So I just think somehow we have to reach out to these people, and, and, and do like, have like partnerships, the kinds of groups that we even work with, like N C Tab, Rye, others related to more stuff here, so.
Your town vision, kind of center of your vision.
Because creating, that's another great opportunity.
Were there any others? So, um, again, thank you for your feedback. Um, what I'll do, I'll capture this into one document and share this out after the retreat. But thank you for your feedback, this is really important. Um, all of this room, you know, you've taken into consideration as part of build out recommendations for our action plan and how to truly implement it, um, even on a local track.
Was there any questions there that you were surprised by?
Um, good question. Let's see, um. Not surprised, um, I would say, I, I did appreciate hearing, um, about the opportunity for underperforming. I, I knew it was there, and I just, it just wasn't one thing that was necessarily top of mind, because I know it up under life sciences. Um. A lot of things don't surprise me, so it's not necessarily, but, um, I would say, if I had to point out something, I would say, um, I do recognize being landlocked could be considered a challenge, but it's an opportunity to redevelop property that we have. I've worked in communities that just did not have properties, don't have the used building. In today's market, no one necessarily has to wait for buildings to be available. So that's a hard thing to do. If you don't have time to build a building, you're not building a project. So, um, when you think about some of the dangers and disadvantages we have with the community, one that, the thing that attracted me to the community was that it was progress, right? Um, my, there is progress, there are building progress. Um, you know, some communities just don't have land. Most communities in Wake County don't really have a lot of land to develop. They might have a little, um, there might be an illusion that there is, but it's not necessarily a lot to develop or that's available to develop. You have a lot of property on the city, on land, and they're never going to move the land. They won't make decisions to ten, twenty years until unfortunately someone dies out and it's available. And you don't have the time to wait on it, so you lose a project. So, um, Holly Springs though, probably shares similar message. Um, the only place that they can really grow is on Holly Springs and Featway side. And some of that is landlocked, and they can't really receive it. Um, from an infrastructure standpoint, they're getting kind of tapped out. So a lot of communities have similar issues, um, they just have to address them at a different time. Again, thank you, and I will provide a summary following the retreat.
And, um, yeah, we're in good time.
Um, uh, I was going to say, the, the schedule doesn't have, uh, a break locked or lined up until nine forty-five. So you're sort of.
A little ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're okay.
So we talked a little, um, about previous history, um, we did a quick high-level overview and spot analysis. So let's talk about, you know, current economic performance, and the things that make us, um, marketable, attractive, and a great place to be. Um, so we've experienced forty-one percent population growth since, um, twenty thirteen. So we see people want to be here, we're a place that people want to be. Um, Wake County is getting fifty-two new people a day. Um, our population has grown to thirty-two thousand people. Um, unemployment rate is two-point-eight percent, and I said it's below that of the county and state average. And the average median household income for Mooresville is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So this, this is one of my favorite slides, I, I like industries, I like to talk about this slide a lot. And so when I think about, um, our industry snapshot, and what makes Mooresville a great place, um, and one of the things that attracted me to, um, this growth is, you know, having our first industry base. And we have a great opportunity to build on that and not just raise one particular industry to the highlight, but find ways to bring all of our industries, um, and be more inclusive about the way that we do that and the way that we market and continue to attract businesses to our community. And so we have a strong presence in life sciences, software, I T, financial services, and clean technology already. When we think about our major employers, we just, we just, um, Dyasys, um, Palace, um, P P D, and Teleflex, just the name of few from, in life sciences. Winova is our largest employer with approximately five thousand employees in Mooresville. And then we have Oracle as well, um, Conduit, um, the lack of credit count there, there are about three thousand employees, Conduit, Conduit. And Credit, Credit Suisse is about two thousand, made about fifteen hundred employees. And then, um, clean technology, you think about clean technology and Snyder Electric. If you open up a brick, brick box, it's your house, Snyder Electric is probably, is probably inside your house. So, um, they manufacture, um, energy components that are in almost every household around the U S, Canada. They employ four-hundred-and-eighty-five people, I'm sorry, in, in the Mooresville rotation. And then they're seeing this energy play. So we have a strong presence, and we, um, we have opportunities to continue to build on that. So I'll, I'll stop here, and when we think about, oh, sorry.
Could you move back to the previous slide?
Mm-hmm.
It's good that we are able to talk about all these people.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and now with the open point of view for the town, are we in touch with these people as to how the trends for them are going to be? Because going back to what Steve was saying, I hate to see a kind of business saying like, okay, they moved their employees. You know, they are beautiful companies. So how would we be ahead of the game with this conversation? And we're looking towards for that. You know, I don't want tomorrow, like, and I can't be saying, but there's a huge flood of one of them. Okay, so five thousand is a billion dollars, I mean, just waiting for them, I don't want to, I don't want to get them there. But it is always good from a town point of view is the group, because that is where you can also market it. Letting us still hiring, you know, Congress is still hiring, so there's a trend that is going to happen. Otherwise, it's, it's hard for anyone. And in fact, I was thinking, if we have some, this is just a small list, we know that we have, but if we can make a conference of words and get carried by. So that would be a certain thing by itself, to promote jobs that people can use it and then come and stay, you know, part of the market.
Those are great points. And so I do now have a comprehensive list of the major employees that are in, um, Mooresville. And many of them also from a, from an employment standpoint, as they're looking to hire, they're part of the tri, and working triangles, um, workforce, attract continuously, and there is there as well. I've had the opportunity to meet with some of the companies on this list here. They've shared some of their, um, I would say, some of their concerns that they have before. Um, many, um, some of them even positioning themselves for future growth. Unfortunately, they have the opportunity to expand where they're currently located. But again, um, and, and without getting into too much of the details of their actual business operations themselves. But I think one thing that's very important as we continue to build out the economic department, having regular touchpoints with existing industry and having those established existing industry business is important so that we build that strong relationship with our existing businesses and that we're constantly engaged and have more of a pulse on what's going on in our own community. Because to your point, where we can stay ahead of things as much as possible, that, that's great. Um, to know where we can help them, because that's part of, part of this, part of the program, the development program, is to give assistance, to be a resource for existing industry. Um, but also using, you know, as an attraction point, to get more people, you know, workforce talent into the community.
Could I make a suggestion there? Um, I think it would be worthwhile if you took town manager or took mayor, and the mayor brought him, and made a courtesy call to CEO of each of those top three or four employers. Tell them how much we appreciate them being in Mooresville, hiring in Mooresville, and what can we do to help you continue to grow in Mooresville. And you might learn there what their plans are, you know, we're, we're expanding, we're cutting back, we're changing product lines. But, you know, just, I think people appreciate being thanked for being in Mooresville and hiring.
That is a very good point. In my experience, um, that in-person, that face-to-face acknowledgement, thank you for being in our community, um, resume as well, and it goes a long way. And that is one of the recommended action items, to have, um, regular touchpoints and in-person visits with, um, the decision makers and, and moves in, in the, in the company, so.
I know, yeah, I think that's a great idea, Frank, I'd like to tell them, I think, you know, I think all of us can maybe support those efforts to reach out to the members of the council. I know I've done it in the past, just leading, leading companies and just having a touchpoint is really important. I mean, I think there's a lot of companies here that still, they're not really invested in Mooresville. They, 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 offices here, and especially now after COVID, less people are coming in, more of them don't work. So there's less of a reason, so that, that may be the idea, is to say, well, we've got all this stuff going on in Mooresville, and, you know, we'd love for you to come to our concerts, and, you know, and, and town all by, or, you know, just, just events that we have, and, and, so I think that's a great idea.
Uh, yes, Anne, as well, um, looks like you've already started some of those meetings, we're happy to support that. And we'd love a little report out of the concerns that you've already heard. We're happy to support that and, and we'd love a little report out of the concerns that you've already heard. Whenever you get that to us, that's helpful.
We'll talk a little bit about it, um, in this, um, session. And also in the news and notes sessions, um, news and notes that you received from Brandon. Um, I also share some business engagement and community outreach follow-ups for one of my cases.
Thank you.
Right with your fear of fact, I'm, I'm real.
Just thinking, that's the most I've heard Frank say in the five years I've been in this.
I'm like an iceberg at ninety-seven.
He was saving up because I've got one brilliant idea just to throw out.
Um, I would say he did that especially for me because he told me he was going to do it just for me.
You're obviously the favorite because he doesn't do that for us.
Oh, I have that problem, and it's, that's illegal, I am.
So, um, moving back to, um, when we think about our competitive advantages and what makes us have a pro-business climate. Um, we, we've been talking about our AAA bond rating, um, our supportive local government, um, competitive tax rates and incentives. And I know that we, um, did mention, um, taking the opportunity to review, further review our existing economic development incentive policy. Um, right now, we're at one, um, one percent. Um, and our streamlined permitting processes, um, that diverse industry base and talking truly about diversifying our industry base and how do we incorporate that into our recruitment and our attraction strategies. Now, and then our strong growth in our technology, life sciences, and technology. Um, not that those are the things that, not that we're only gonna focus on those industries, but what we're saying here is these are the things that have made us have a pro-business climate in the past. And we're just acknowledging that, that's what this is here. And then, of course, our high quality of life. Um, we're a diverse community, um, our strategic location, our access to, um, great healthcare, um, education. I mean, we talk about education a lot, but we don't really talk about our access to healthcare. That's some things that actually draw people to this community. There are communities throughout the nation that don't have access to healthcare that we do. And those things are attractive. So, those are all the things that make us have a pro-business climate. And they kind of start telling that story of what our value proposition is. Um, and I'll take a minute and, are there any questions?
Definitely. I'm, I'm, what's the, what's the credit rating of the surrounding towns, Holly Springs, Cary? Are we all triple rated or, or, I don't know, how is it rated?
Many are not all the triple A in the county, um, but there are a number of those triple A's and others that might be double rated.
I think it was in your either fund balance or a report you got last fall that has a lot of those ratings.
I'm sure you've seen that at one point. It was parking lot.
Yeah, and I would say Morrisville's a bit further unique in the, and Byron actually noted this. He came here, they actually have three ratings. And not all communities go to that extreme. But that further substantiates the, you know, robust ability. I'll put that in that big Q screen.
Is there a fourth rating you too, Steve? Can we be honest?
No, sure. So, I guess my question is, what about our AAA bond rating makes, what's the advantage to a business of locating a community with a AAA bond? Do they get better, better rates on their loans and stuff because of that? Or what's the, like, what's the connection?
Well, well, I mean, when you think about one thing from, as thinking about from an infrastructure standpoint, I'm a business located in a community that have a, a, a strong bond rating. I know that they can make the investments that I do in infrastructure. Um, that's just one example I think of the top of my mind.
Okay.
I think it's, it's that it's indicative of a, a number of good things that go into that rating. And, you know, they know very well what goes into that. And so, when they see that, again, you know, they know if we're AAA, that if we offer, for example, an incentive like we're gonna come through with that, as Tiffany spoke to, the infrastructure's gonna be there. Um, they also recognize that, you know, we're doing some of the right things to work with existing businesses to maintain.
If, if I can offer too, sort of like if you're looking for a, a new car and you're reading reviews and you want to know what Consumer Reports or whatever says about it and its stability, its safety, all the features, that's what a AAA rating tells you. It's all the reviews essentially of the highest raters and what they can tell you about that agency. And you want the best reviews, you want the best ratings because that means it's the best of the best. And that's where you want to be because it's gonna give you the best features. It's gonna give you the, the best opportunities. Um, and I think that's sort of what Tiffany's speaking to is it can provide the things you need to get you where you want to be.
That's a good point. Cause when you talk about safety, think about the fact, cause that's a component of the AAA bond. And if I'm a company coming in, I don't, might not, I won't be attracted to a community where I know I'm gonna have to come and pay high interest, um, insurance rates.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think you are a hundred percent correct, more than the AAA. I would say where companies are also looking is IS nine thousand one four five because that brings down the insurance, you know, the primary, you know, a few here, like, you know, whatever they do then also, we also have the boxing backs, you know, certification. So, those are high standards, I would say. Like, how is that, and therefore not here? And, and obviously, one common thing I hear from all the people is traffic. You know, because when they, um, they want something just close by to their people so that they can come to work and traffic. Uh, the only selling point is the five forty, um, that we get at fifty-four as a fastest thing. Otherwise, I hear all the hundred of my money.
Our financial advisors at the end of any credit rating always help us do all the, all the analysis of our, our ratings and what will filter to the services, surface of the biggest influential factors to that and how benefits the community. I can add that as a part of your, your data because it's really good information. But it's the strength of the community, it's, it's the whole big picture. The infrastructure, the support services are there, the workforce, uh, the ability to tap into those things that they need, that pipeline of talent, um, the educational facilities and the import-export. All of that is such a, a great draw for Morrisville and that location proximity. And it helps, um, businesses when they locate here to actually, uh, build or, or get capital for their businesses. Yeah, it does relate to, to them tapping into, um, being able to borrow money and over businesses.
Just one point, and I think that we should be careful when we, when we miss the Wake County school system as the, you know, as like the great schools proximate to Morrisville and Wake County school system specifically. I think we should be really careful about that because the, a lot of the schools right around where people are gonna want to live in, if a business locates here, their schools are gonna be capped. They're not gonna be going to the proximate school. I just think, you know, I just think we want to avoid any kind of baited switch with, you know, look at the parks in our elementary, it's so beautiful. And your kid is going to Peace Elementary forty minutes away. So, I just, that's just something, I don't know, I don't know how much you know about, but, um, that's why I'm bringing it up. I don't know how much you know about that situation, but...
Why not personally?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that to me is a, a potential, a potential downside from a workforce perspective, like bringing people.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I'd like to add to maybe the parking lot or just, just something is kind of related to this comment about corporate headquarters is I'd like us to see whether we can introduce Tiffany to, um, to some of the venture capital companies in the area. Uh, most of the VCs are all in Durham, but they all have strong connections in Morrisville. And I think having the companies that are funding startups, if they, if they could be in Morrisville, you could find a place, you know, it could be, that could help for, for small businesses or people, great ideas. So, just, just an idea because most of them are all in Durham.
I've met with some of them.
Yeah. And they come through Morrisville all the time. And like, Anil Chawla, he was a Morrisville resident and he sold his company for fifty-five. And he sold his company for three hundred million dollars. And his main investor was David Gardner, who's a good friend of mine, and he's been to, I brought him to Morrisville a few times. So, I mean, you know, that's a great Morrisville story. And we should be bringing those investors here. And David was looking, he, he closed down his Cary office, he was in downtown Cary, and then moved out and closed down Cary Innovation Center. So, that, I'm just giving that as an example because if those guys were funding Morrisville companies, I mean, if we could have them headquartered in Morrisville, that could be huge for us. There's only like five major, four, really three major venture capital companies in, in the triangle of the state.
Even if we could get them on a panel to speak to, to speak to growing businesses or, I mean, I think that would be cool too.
I'll make this clear. I'm done, sorry.
Thank you. I would be unpopular, but I think I was to say it. Um, you know, and in fact, Shannon is also there. I say some of the best departments like, you know, uh, inspection, they pay for themselves. And I think they're important and they're fundamental. I think we are putting a lot of pressure on them, but I think you need any help. I think don't feel like, you know, to come and tell if you need more people. This is one area where you can, you know, add and then automatically pay as people, whatever you go and do and get businesses, it's a tax dollar, but basically adds to the whole ecosystem.
Thank you. Are there any other problems? Well, it's break time. I know y'all, I thrilled everyone this morning and you're ready to go.
No, this is good stuff. Great.
We're gonna take a fifteen minute break. My watch says nine thirty-five.
If you didn't bring your, your luggage and your room key there, please go grab that so that we can get everyone checked out of their rooms.
No, no, great, great.
Do not look at those. Do not look at those. Please leave that here by two oh one to start our next discussion.
If you don't have five cards around the table there by the, uh, dining room.
And please bring your room key and set it right here on this side of room keys. You've got all the luggage.
Little high.
Where are you hiding that?
Little high left. There's a card on the floor right there behind you.
Oh, that was you?
Correct.
Wow.
I can't be responsible for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
You re-envisioned, you have to find a way to implement this.
Liz, you know, Penny right after.
Yes, 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 yes. And I, um, I see. You wanna see your coat? Is it cold? Yes, cause I was gonna forget. Yeah. I literally just said, thank you.
Hey, Tiffany, don't forget your coat.
Hello. I just wanted to see, okay, key card drop off and then, um, you... Make like an invoice or something, I need to know how much you need to pay for the, um, we might have to do a, a few different calls.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Thank you. I'll be back in a few if you need some time to get it together for me.
I can get, you know, and then we'll, we'll, um, try to look at, like, and then we'll just do a joint email if that would work.
Yeah.
Um, cause we'll each separate reservation. Or y'all might have like a, a group reservation, but I could have to be.
Yeah, I think it should be a group reservation, um... Yes, it is. Just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, we pay you for the leave.
Right, right. Okay, perfect. It looks like I have all of that here, so I'll print off this one.
Okay.
Um, once y'all are all ready to leave, unless you'd like me to print it out.
Yeah, let's print it off now so I can, um, like I said, just make sure. Cause obviously I've had a lot of stuff on my car. This past weekend, so we just want to make sure that we're okay.
Right.
We will be, but you know, whoever I have to ask, I'm gonna go ahead and ask them for their cards.
And are y'all expected to check out right at twelve?
Um, yes, we should be, yeah, yeah. Hopefully, um, not a second later than that.
So, you...
But if it was maybe like twelve-thirty, do you think it would be an, an issue?
Um...
Do we really need to be, you know, thank you, sorry.
We didn't have anything to say about early checkout, so if y'all can get out by twelve, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I meant Morrisville for the conference room because we're gonna be out of our actual rooms by twelve. They should, yeah, they should be giving me... Okay, cool.
That's perfectly fine, I was more so worried about the...
Yeah, the rooms, okay. All good, thank you so much. I agree. This year, after this year, yes. Thank you. Thank you. This is the worst transcription service ever. We kind of found that secret, it's not working. I'm getting crazy. What is, how is it over there? Oh, my God. We're just, we're talking about things. The word that we're saying is nowhere near what it is capturing.
I don't remember what Liz said earlier, but it captured thorns. And that is not what she said and it was like, it's picking up, not well, but it's picking up. Oh, God. Oh, man. Oh, there are tears, there are tears.
That is crazy. Huh? Yeah, you need help, I'll set it aside, sorry. It's just. I know, I love it. I love it when Frank speaks up. When everybody stops like.
I love you too. You smell good. Feel like you smell good too, but.
Yeah. He said, I'm not anybody's second best.
You know, another person would take the hint instead of calling that up like that part. You know, you wanted to go there, respect that. I'll just read the book.
Oh, my goodness. I don't even know after, I'm just, I'm just laughing. You and Enzo on the TikTok show, right?
I found it on TikTok. I was really sad, I put in my last letter Saturday night. Yeah, I was really sad. It was, it makes sense. I'm so happy. It took some time. What is? Yes. But yeah, they have like five sayings. I have an hour. Eleven. Yeah, so we still have, we can have an hour. And then, do you think us to wrap up before twelve thirty? Because twelve thirty before is.
Yeah.
Did you have some magic? Um, yes, it depends, it depends, I mean, we're okay in this conference room if it's all until, you know, we get done though. I believe that we have to remove before we're about to. So, um, yeah. And you know how my mind works, I started. We were talking about like classic manufacturing.
We're talking about, um, level device.
No. My mind started.
No, we won't buy a factory. Well, maybe it wouldn't.
I don't know. That's not like manufacturing.
This is not. You're getting plastic resin. That's already, they're working resin there and they're sitting on home. That's not, that's not it. Now, never seen it done, and I'm not a new to me in my mind.
I already did it, actually.
That's what it was like. We were talking about.
So I'll go ahead and take us out there and not like the rest of the people out there won't be here till we leave the conference room.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they want to do like rooms on one and then like catering and.
On another.
Yeah, they. Catering and conference on the other or something like that.
So we'll, we'll do that here too. We already took pictures.
No, not at all. I was thinking, you know, I don't know what else.
Yeah, if they could tell us who that is.
Okay. That's perfect, yeah, that's easy. It's easy, I'll need to, yeah.
I'll just go ahead and pay for it. Alright, Jeannie said she talked to Jan already. Oh, God. Oh, I might as well just take my whole purse.
So I think, yeah, we're interested in. It's amazing, huh? We run, we are here, we're there. Anyway, I think it's totally, yeah. Yes, it's conversion. That's a good.
Hey, guys. We use the opportunity to award those good seats together and.
So we're doing some land stuff, you know, for two or three days then doing, um, down to, um.
Did you read it? She's like, read yourself today.
Still plugged in. And it's on.
Well, no, it's, it's not that.
Is it in the transportation?
This was a one-way road.
Let's hope, I don't have time to stop, two more graphs.
Training.
I've heard about that, I've heard about that, um. But they were thinking that, I don't think it goes there. Hey, Vicki, put this. Oh, yeah. Oh, bye, yes, yes. Playing with you. This is Lou. But our whole thing, yeah. I say we'll be there, we'll be. Those weren't there. So I don't know what else gonna end up being like, but. Aw. Aw. Well, he left it out where she could get it.
Erin, will you be ready?
Yeah.
Want to come back into session or pass it to the listener with me?
Thank you everyone. Thank you everyone. Alright, um. So let's kind of start, um, so this part of our session, we want to begin to talk about the, um, our program progress today. So talk a little bit about the newly developed economic development department and, um, the work that I've had the opportunity to participate in since, um, I got here in October of last year. And, um, some of the metrics will be from a full year standpoint because again, a lot of economic development work was being done by existing staff. So we'll talk a little bit about our small business, um, programs as well. Alright, so, twenty twenty-four key highlights. Um, on this slide, I'll give a overview of metrics and then, um, in the next slide, I'll dive a little bit on these metrics. And so, since October, had the opportunity to, um, participate in sixteen partner meetings. Um, and some of those meetings, so there, some of those have been multiple meetings with the same partner. And, um, I'm sorry, so I didn't include them in the sixteen capital, there's been probably about twenty-five meetings in all. But, um, sixteen individual meetings, sixteen individual partners, sorry. Um, existing industries, seven, seventeen visits. Um, and that's from October to December. And we look at a full year of small business support, um, that includes much of work done by Jenny Hook's team.
Collaborative effort.
Collaborative town of Morrisville effort is. Um, and so within twenty twenty-four, had an opportunity to award five storefront outfit grant and hopefully seventeen workshops. Um, and then last year, there were over ninety-eight requests for information for economic development projects, um, reviewed and received. We submitted responses for twenty-eight projects. Um, and that pipeline created a pipeline of five thousand nine hundred and seven potential jobs in the pipeline and three billion dollars of potential capital investment. And so when I say potential, it was the ones that were actively supported today. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, this is one of my favorite slides cuz this talks about collaboration and partnership. And so to talk about partner engagement, um, since October, I've had the opportunity to meet, um, and continue to build, um, relationships and establish relationships with several people within the economic development community, Morrisville, um, and our region. And so have met with Wake Tech, um, for example, have discussions with them about a Launch Morrisville program. Um, if you're familiar with Launch Wake, which is an Octoberville program, it's a ten-week program. Um, this, um, we met with Wake Tech, myself and Wake Tech and the firm, that was on Wake Tech about the next potential cohort for, um, our Morrisville businesses and residents to participate in. It will be a ten-week, um, small business and entrepreneurial program. It is free of charge to the participants. And we anticipate that the next cohort will be held. And so we're continuing to build out that relationship and partnership with the small business, um, entrepreneurial, with Wake Tech. Had the opportunity to meet with Tom White at North Carolina State University. He is the director of economic development there at NC State. Um, building that relationship with NC State and strengthening that is really important because working with Tom as we recruit these high-tech businesses, he gives us access to talent. Um, as we recruit businesses here, oftentimes when they come to visit the communities, they sit around tables such as this and say, well, what can your community provide? What can we offer? What about the talent? Does your university teach certain curriculum that we're looking for, um, in our, in our business? And working with people like Tom at the table, he can help deliver this message and better, um, communicate how NC State can help us, um, accomplish those goals. It had the opportunity to meet with private developers such as King Street, Trinity Capital, um, working with also just Wake Quill, um, and Indian Properties, Tachy, Stitch, Spark Development. And just learn more about the available properties that's within our community so that I can further understand the market and understanding the industry um, as we build plans to market our community for our target industries. Um. I would like, um, I thought I, um, partnership, we continue to, um, grow with the economic development partnership of North Carolina. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with EDP and C and Wake County Economic Development with, um, their business development team. So if you're familiar with economic development partnership of North Carolina, they're the lead economic development agency for the state of North Carolina. Um, and they have, um, a business development arm. And so they work to, they, they're kind of before we respond and react to companies that are looking to locate here. So they go out and they get business leads and look at people that are emerging industries that may be interested in looking in the state of North Carolina. But their business development team also works in collaboration with their foreign investment offices and their foreign offices. I had the opportunity to meet with Nathanae Dick and Raoul from the Indian office. Um, because there's particularly in growing interest in Indian companies investing in the US and particularly North Carolina. Um, the type of companies that are looking here. And Morrisville is uniquely positioned because of our talent, because of our strategic location, um, our access to the talent, our access to R D U, RTP and our diverse community. Um, when I sat in the meeting with them, they were, um, really interested and surprised to hear fifty-two, almost fifty-two percent of our population is Asian. And they're like, oh, I, I did, I did not know that. And then, um, you know, sharing with them about our existing temples and our promise to grow. And so. And so as, um, there are some preliminary plans to invite the, um, Indian Chamber of Commerce to, um, North Carolina and get in and participate in some of those meetings. Um, but that will be done by the state and we have an opportunity to participate, um, potentially as, you know, more as our, our entity. And so those are just some relationships that will continue to stay at the table and grow and making sure, um, Morrisville is in the forefront from a business development, um, perspective. And we'll talk a little more about, um, capitalizing on foreign direct investment because we already have presence of international companies, companies here. Um, but I think that's a strategic advantage that we have amongst other communities within our, um, state. Um, and also just continuing to, um, form those deep relationships with Wake County Economic Development. I think it's very important to, um, continue that relationship with them, understanding economic trends and where they're moving, um, as they, um, continue to, to grow and their strategic plans. Um, and as they share, as they find information out, they share information with us, I can share with council. Um, I'll highlight also Carolina Small Business Development Fund. Um, Carolina Small Business Development Fund is a community development financial institution. So I design. Um, um, and they provide funding, um, certainly have provided funding to small businesses and underutilized businesses as well. And I sit on the board of their organization, um, but still, um, working with them has given me an opportunity of to find out more about access to capital and ways that I can bring that information back to our community. And we could use that for Morrisville Means Business and so we can share that information with our small businesses, um, in the chamber. And so, um, as we work with the chamber to build our program for twenty twenty-five, gonna bring those business resource providers to the table. And, um, so that we can share that information with our business community. And so those are just some of the partners, um, and keep in mind, and many of these meetings and conversations starting in October, there are already plans and already in emails and on schedule to work with so many more people and build out more partnerships as we, um, continue throughout twenty twenty-five. Um, also, I don't think it's listed here, the Research Triangle Regional Partnership, which is one, um, uh, huge marketing organization for the Research Triangle. I had an opportunity to meet with Ryan Coons. Um, he does a very good job selling the Triangle region. So I met with him, I said, hey, I'm down here and with Morrisville, so I want to make sure when we sell the Research Triangle region, we want to make sure that Morrisville is top of my, so any opportunity that I have to be, like, he is up in the sideline and invisible, I'm gonna take that opportunity.
What's the name of this one, I'm searching?
RTRP. RTRP, which is the Research Triangle Regional Partnership. Um, if you recall, um, several years ago, there were about eight across the state and they represented each reason, region. Only a couple of those regions continue to exist.
Will you take questions now?
Yes, if there are any questions, I'll.
Yeah, uh, if you go back, I don't know the abbreviation of that C is.
That's what she was just talking about.
Carolina, Carolina Small Business Development Fund.
And then W C.
Wake County Economic Development. Um, I'll, Wake County Economic Development, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. Um, the North Carolina Economic Development Association or this.
Yeah, I think the legend.
Here. So, 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 um, it's good that, that, you know, you're able to talk to NC State regarding, um, but also important is other university fees because everyone has a different flavor of talent that comes up. Um, I'll, I'll leave you the example at one time, like, I was like five hundred years ago, in Charlotte, you know, pretty much everyone gets the net you're not getting your talent. That's pretty much a factor. What they started seeing is, uh, to up their game, they have changed their curriculum more into, uh, data analytics and, you know, more marketable for, you know, because of the financial industries that they have towards that. So they are getting better jobs than chaplain because chaplain is more traditional, investors and NC State, those things. And A and T has a different group of talent. So I think tapping into those and understanding and going back and forth is also important because you're getting talent from them and also giving them opportunity to move to Morrisville. That's what I'm just saying.
That's it, um, thank you. Is there any?
I won't, nothing. Um, this might be not be the right time. Uh, what are your thoughts about, um, the sister cities? Is that the role of economic development or different organizations?
Um. I would say my personal opinion and experience with sister cities, um, in the eighties and nineties, I think they were more common. I think sometimes it's difficult now to maintain some of those relationships, sometimes it could be, you know, due to local reasons. Um, most organizations and municipalities have a non-profit organization that run those outside of the, the local government themselves to really truly be able to make them, you know, more successful. Um, and the community has to have an intentional understanding of why they want to create a sister city. Um, some may have for economic development reasons, um, most today that continue to, they be in operation have more of a cultural sharing awareness than necessarily economic development reasons.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Um, so I'll, I'll move into, um, business engagement and understanding our local business needs. And this is where, um, I'll, I'll share with you some highlights from some of the existing industry businesses that I had the opportunity to participate in to, um, since I've been here. Um, and so with some of those businesses, and I will not share specifically the business itself, but just provide again, um, an, an overview. Um, with some of those businesses, um, I've had the opportunity, um, to meet with businesses that are new to the, new to the community, um, looking to potentially grow and expand, and they need, um, needed assistance such as like design and professional services. Um, needed my support in, um, referral and what services that already exist in our community so that they can continue to support, you know, existing businesses and community as well. So we've made referrals to design and, um, marketing and architectural services. Um, I've also heard, how can you help us with hiring these? And so again, we'll talk a little bit about workforce, um, and we're lucky where we can work with Capital Area Workforce Board on recruiting, recruiting screen and training. And for our businesses, there are also some incentives if you're looking to do some customized training where Wake Tech can help you create your own curriculum, your training curriculum. And so we do have some, um, existing businesses that have expressed that as a lead. Um, I'm also hearing about financial resources. What are the available grants or loans that are available out there? Um, I've had the opportunity to introduce some potential, um, businesses to venture capitalists. Unfortunately, none of the venture capitalists are actually in Morrisville, but they do service and provide, um, Morrisville businesses. And also hearing about, you know, permitting assistance, how, and so I prefer people to plan, you know, and eat inspections. How can we help them navigate that submitted process? So those are, um, some of the things that, um, um, I've heard, I've also heard from an existing business. Hey, we have available space. So they, they downsized, so they have commercial offices, they downsized, they don't want to, um, offload their existing space just because they want to hold on to that portfolio, but they know that they're not gonna truly need that space. And at some point, they're, they're gonna be upside down, they're gonna lose money. So what are the next steps? What can they do with that space? How can they, um, offload that space in the event that they're gonna get rid of that space? Because, um, their, um, employees are hybrid, a lot of them are still remote. And, and what they do in a world where a lot of people are not coming back to the office. So you are hearing some of those things from existing businesses that have, um, a substantial amount of office space.
So that's just subleasing? Trying to present.
There's potential for subleasing. Um, they're waiting on the hires to determine if they actually have the right to sell property. And there are some people that are not willing to sell property at this time. Are there any questions regarding what we're doing, um, from some existing industry?
I just wanted, would it be, uh, appropriate collaboration opportunity to, when they're asking for workforce support, like staffing help, point them towards our chamber who has some staffing companies as members, or is that too kind of grandiose?
So I, I believe in offering multiple channels for resources, but what I, I don't like to point to specific companies because I don't want to be in a kitchen where I'm ever showing the images.
So I think. So I'm saying to the chamber, you can sort of do that without specific companies and then we're going to put them in the chamber. Seems like a way to.
And I think it's a good idea and it's just also sometimes depending on the actual company itself, the size of the company and how relevant the need is. Because if the, if it's a larger company with robust needs, um, a very sophisticated network life, the Capital Area workforce, which is part of the state's workforce system could just, um, has been more beneficial to us. So we think this is out there. But the. Um, so Morrisville, um, means this, um, this program, it's been in operations for eighteen.
It's been, yeah, so, so it really originally started with an intern that we brought in with Michael James and he was responsible for small business and ARPA, you know, but grant related at the time, we were starting a pilot program with small business. And it came even, I'll take it even a little bit further back, it was really with, um, strategic goal champion teams that the idea was generated through the council's idea of needing to provide that support. So it could really have some roots in the strategic plan and moving forward and just the number of hands that have been put into turning a pilot program into a really successful opportunity to sustain for the future and how important small businesses are as a support structure for our larger economic engine. So, so it, it just goes really up even further back.
Thank you, Jenny. Um, and so we'll talk about the, um, storefront, um, grant, federal board, recognizing national small business weekends, those seventeen, um, programs in North Carolina. Um, what I want to do, I just want to emphasize on that last bullet there. We are actively recruited as small business specialists to join the economic development team. I am so excited. I have heard from that person, oh, we, right, I'm really excited.
Second.
Um, we're really, we're really excited about that. Um, application process is open right now and when I get back on Monday, we'll sit down and review the stacks and stacks of applicants. And so hopefully by end of March, March, we will have someone on staff that will be able to actively assist us as we, um, support small businesses. Um, I will try to, um, quickly go through, um, our.
I'm sorry, I'm, thank you. Just a quick question, the seventeen programs of workshops, were those for the chamber?
Um, no, so those were part of Morrisville, um, Means Business Program, but the chamber did partner and provide support and they hosted, um, the workshop at their location.
Okay, but we, those were all workshops?
Yes.
I didn't know that. I actually went to one of those and I did not know that it was, I thought it was a chamber thing. Okay, thank you.
And so, um, the request for information, um, RFI's, um, building a pipeline for future growth. Um, the RFI, this is how we receive our economic development projects, um, set up, if you don't mind. But, um, so this funnel shows you a little bit about the pathway and how we receive economic development projects. Um, typically we will receive them from Wake County Economic Development, that receives them from the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. Wake County will disseminate them to the, um, Wake County will, will send them out to the, to other municipalities. We will review, um, individually to determine if this is something we want to pursue, pursue as a community. And they will respond accordingly. Um, and so we have reviewed ninety-eight in twenty twenty-four and twenty, um, submitted for twenty-eight projects. Um, I am, were there any questions about that?
Yes. Um, just on the last information that you did, um, I had the same preview from Apple. Um, and that's where we came to know how much we are moving out to others. Can we get a part of the report, not the company, but if you might, at least what businesses are, you know, funneling in the pipeline?
So what I can do is, um, cause, cause one thing that's very important, these projects are confidential and they're confidential until the point in time that they decide to locate. So many of them are active, but I can aggregately provide, um, a industry.
Yeah, that's all we.
Just a, a industry of media.
Because they have a project something, so anyway, if you're confused, you don't know, but at least the industry point of view is good. And the reason why we did not pick it up, uh, is it because space? Is it because it doesn't fit into our stuff? So at least we know what to look out for.
And I, I can do that for, um, I can say from October to December, I have better data on.
Going forward or this.
Data. Gotcha, thank you. Um, and so, um, I want to, so we're gonna move into the, um, high-level strategic plan review, um, and, and refinements and recommendations. And so Catherine presented the economic development strategy. Uh, and here this slide just kind of represents the components of the economic development strategy. Talks about business improvement, retention and expansion, industry cluster cultivation, um, marketing strategy, quality alike, small business support and regional engagement. I will leave this all out to you, but there are three overarching economic development goals. You know, if you look at the, um, strategy, there are some cascading goals, but there are three overarching goals. Overall, economic prosperity, growth, business attraction, um, retention, small business support, um, industry cultu- um, cultivation and economic development, marketing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, I see that commercial industrial real estate as one of the factors. I guess piggybacking on what the Holly Springs, because, um, uh, under the hood of economic development, they showcase which areas are available, you know, even though I don't know if this one, but I'm not sure it's on. But it will also be a good collaboration between town economic development and the realistic market, which say like, example, the Stitch. Okay, it is available and it is in their circles, but if we basically get the same listing or something into our website, like a comment, okay, this is available, it basically adds an additional layer and also actually anyone who's to their, they. Not really available.
And so we do. So I have, we have a webpage. I'm so excited. Economic development. It's, it's a page. We have to start somewhere, we have a page. Um, the, the page is not just on, um, Morrisville Chamber site, there is a page dedicated to economic development.
That's huge.
Hey, baby.
And to this point, I approach here, there is a link that feeds into the.
Before we go to the, to the large, just to get small business, a couple of ideas and some residents that we've got to be about is, oh, we always really want to try to get better about simplifying, promoting licenses, about expanding, getting receptive to value. If, if, I totally are.
Text me a link.
Small business. And in fact, like eight major co-workers base, a lot of businesses, you know, me and folks hoping to be about having a place where you can have it mostly physical or even a growth of questions, you can have marketing assistance, you know, high access to capital. And then just basically, you know, hopefully the small business question, you can go out there and. And then just basically, you know, hopefully the small business equation can go out there and support the asthma that we've got. And giving small, completing small business workshops. And I think, you know, some of the, um, some of the folks, the small businesses are members of the chamber. And the other thing the chamber did really well was, uh, buy local. You know, so to the extent we can support small businesses. So we do that. The ARPA does a great job normally getting mostly Morseville restaurants to serve a dinner for the council meeting, work sessions and, um, and then doing different. So those are just some ideas that's what they're reporting like to the.
Okay, thank you. Um, were there any other comments?
I remember looking at the page and looking again now, I see that link right at the top.
Okay, so I want to move into key areas of focus. Um, we'll take about refinement, just looking at the strategy. And so I've broken them up into economic goals, targeted industries focused, um, capitalizing on foreign direct investment, investment strategies and small business and innovation ecosystem. I will not read out all of these questions, but as I was reviewing the economic development strategy and thinking of recommendations for refinements, these are some of the questions I began to ask myself and to think about as, you know, moving forward, how could we expand on our existing strength? What are some things that we may potentially, um, be missing or what are some opportunities that we may have? Um, so one of the things, um, you know, our current goals still align with our original needs and priorities. And I'll take back these strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and, and, and work through those and just make sure that we're still lock and set. And I think from a general standpoint, our long-term vision and economic goals, they remain the same. But I want to talk about target industry focus. Um, we talked a lot about, about diverse industries today. And, um, I would say I agree. I think it's very important that, um, I, I've never, I do not believe in putting all of our eggs in one basket. And I think one way that we can be extremely competitive is to capitalize on our target industries that exist and even expand and be a little more inclusive about the regular market and try to track those industries. And so, and think about emerging industries in sectors such as artificial intelligence, fintech and clean technology. Now, how do we grow on that? Um, and then how do we prioritize, um, FDI in an area where we already have a pro, um, a strong presence? And how do we build on that and, and so that we're impactful? Um, and we talked about investment strategies and I, and I know it's somewhat of a marketing item, but we're going to evaluate our existing economic development incentive policy as well. And also look at, when we think about our economic development, two kids, the two kids is not always incentives. There's other things like technical assistance, um, you know, building public private partnerships. It doesn't always necessarily have to be money is that monetary investment when we think about investment strategies. Um, and then, um, small business and innovation systems, um, how do we support startups? I've heard a lot of, um, about that today. How do we support our startups and our small businesses? I've heard incubator and coworking space. And so we'll try to dabble into that as well. Go ahead.
I see FDI, but I'm not able to reflect on anything, but in triangle card is, um, the body responsible for. Like, you know, because many of the, the companies come and they are the pseudo body that. I'll give you an example of how I remember it, like Revlon. Okay, Revlon is somewhere in Oxford. And when they import the products, they don't have to pay a tax because Revlon gets the, the pro, the, the raw materials and then packages in Oxford. And then only they, you know, then the taxes are implied, not for, they don't, they don't have double taxation.
The foreign trade zone?
Yeah, foreign, yeah. So, so I would see those terms, you know, because Morseville is also included into that area. And there are a lot of businesses that come to it, so getting with triangle card also.
So an opportunity to establish a foreign trade zone and more.
It's already there. It's already there and they are the triangle card are the exorbitant administrators for that. But, but, uh, what I'm going to say is if we can market that, so that would help to allow that to be.
Yeah, if you have that, that would be on your. Yeah. I have another thought about when you hear a later slide about chemical stating one of our businesses. But like, what does our portfolio look like now? That would be helpful, you know, how clever we are, which of those are emerging, which are declining? Just to make sure that like an investment portfolio or finances, what does ours look like in our business community? Like our, do we have all our eggs in one basket now? What can we do to even make that a little bit more? Should we really target something and grow it? And which of those are FDI? Would be nice to track as well.
So when we think about, um, target industries, so my recommendation is that we focus on, pardon the advanced manufacturing, business and financial services, clean technology, life sciences and technology sectors. And we think about advanced manufacturing, um, I, when I say advanced manufacturing, I do not mean smokestacks, dirty manufacturing. I mean manufacturing where the process of manufacturing the product is innovative. Um, you need highly skilled employees, um, technology that is advanced. And basically you shorten the production time. And today, most manufacturing is advanced. That's just the way it is. And so, um, and we'll talk a little bit about this in our next presentation, but over thirty-seven percent of the projects that Wake County Economic Development receives, they're from advanced manufacturing projects. So advanced manufacturing itself is not necessarily one particular sector. It crosses over various factors. Um, business and financial services, this is just built, building on our existing strength that we already have when you think about credit swiss. And these are all the reasons why, um, we should continue to focus on this industry. Um, originally I think we kind of focused on just financial services, but the state of North Carolina itself targets business and financial services until I aligned ourselves, you know, with the state and EDP and C and those marketing efforts. I thought it was, would be good for us to expand and be a little more inclusive to include business services as well. Um, and we, um, we have traditionally kind of targeted and went after some headquarters locations as well. And not that we're going to necessarily always get back a lot of dollars. But if we're targeting business services, we do have some office presence, you know, why not build on the fact that we have office presence here in, in Morseville? Um, clean technology, we've, um, we know that, um, there has been some changes and break, and there may be some changes in regulations to come. I can't necessarily foresee that. So I will say the clean technology industry may be impacted. We anticipate we're going to, we're going to continue to see some growth there. Um, and I, I think this, this industry, again, I don't have a crystal ball to look into, but I still think, and we know that as technology advances, we see that we still have these electric vehicles. We see that, that we have Ford Nano here with a presence. And that industry will grow and we have a presence here. We have the skills, talents, the skilled members talent. Um, Morseville has put North Carolina on the map with Ford Nano, um, with their energy storage. So let's continue to dominate when we can. Um, life sciences, um, life sciences has long been a target industry in Morseville, but recognizing the opportunities to grow that. And, and I want to take a minute to just look at this chart, this radial diagram here. Agricultural and environmental biotech, pharmaceuticals, medical devices and diagnostics, biochemistry, bio manufacturing, digital health and health IT, all of that encompasses life sciences. So when we think about life sciences, we want to intentionally look at it as a whole and everything that we can input within that umbrella.
Yeah, this was actually a question from after we were talking about, um, advanced manufacturing. But how susceptible do advanced manufacturing companies tend to be to disruptions and supply chain? Specifically to disruptions in foreign supply chain?
Well, I think because, and, and I don't know how to best answer that question because they cross over so many different sectors. So this is, um, susceptibility would be, if put into any other industry. But anytime you're getting the materials from, you know, overseas and you have to wait, you're going, you could be impacted.
Are certain advanced manufacturing companies less dependent on, on foreign parts, foreign, on our, our parts, supply chain than others? And is it possible we could focus more on those?
I think it's specific based on the industry itself. So let's say if it's, um, an automotive component, some of those, or electronics, some of those pieces may be foreign. So it would be more susceptible if we're waiting to get that some devices that might come from China or from overseas somewhere. Um, life sciences, some of the components that are used for the biomanufacturing are, are right here and then others are from UK. Um, so it's just depend on the actual individual industry itself that they're doing that that manufacturing in.
I can help answer that. Cause, um, so I worked for Rocco Automation, which is a major, major competitor to Siemens and Snyder Electric. And, um, our job is making a lot of the electronic components that are used in manufacturing for, for making everything from automobile parts to paper, um, consumer products. And advanced manufacturing is highly dependent on, um, parts coming from Asia and even Mexico. Um, we were highly affected by, uh, the, the supply chain was highly affected by COVID. The, they have made a lot of changes in being able to, they qualified a lot more suppliers to be able to have a lot more, uh, options for getting those parts. But pretty much every manufacturing industry uses electronic components in their control systems, their manufacturing systems that make anything. And they're all dependent on components that we get from other countries. I mean, even things we assemble in the United States, we assemble parts that are brought in from Mexico. There's companies that are just on the other side of the Mexican border that, you know, have trucks coming in through, um, the border every single day to be assembled on the other side.
Yeah, so I, the reason I'm asking those questions is because, I, I mean, it's definitely not a trade secret that Cisco was massively affected by supply chain disruptions during COVID. And I, you know, so a, as was the entire industry and there, and there's been a lot of supply chain diversification. I'm sure that that is, you know, I'm sure that's helping the situation should those supply chain, should those supply chain impacts happen again. But I just, I just am saying that as we're looking at companies that we want to come to Morseville, we want those companies to be set up for success. And I think that some evaluation of the diversity of their supply chain could be warranted just so that we're not left with empty buildings and jobs that never appear.
And I think, um, to your point, because again, you know, electronic components are in almost everything, right? And I guess, you know, to the point that we can receive that information and share it, because some is confidential, right? And I guess it would be worth analyzing, like how do we kind of analyze the supply chain of a particular industry and see the competitive, the competitive competitiveness there and how could we potentially, right?
I mean, because that's what I'm saying, certainly on an industry level, that information is definitely.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to bubble that to the top of like, you know, which industries are more vulnerable? Like where, you know, we're focusing hard in on life sciences. And of these, there's six buckets here and I can see three of them specific, very little supply chains in my opinion.
Yeah, that could probably would have definitely a vulnerable, um.
Yeah.
Vertical farming wouldn't be, you just need some LED bulb.
Farming, you just need seeds and dirt basically and awareness.
Water and LED bulbs.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to rattle on this. I'm just saying, I just wanted, you know, I just want some awareness of that.
Yeah, and at first I wasn't really sure where you were going, but then the idea of using, making sure that we're targeting resilient industries is kind of my takeaway from what you said.
And again, to, to continue to expand on, um, our presence in technology. Um, I'll tap into our foreign investment. We talked about this earlier. Um, and so this information, um, this FDI data dates back until two thousand and three. So it's about twenty years worth of investment information on twenty FDI projects, seventeen companies. Um, and the largest amount of investment from Japan with over forty-six percent of that capital, capital investment from Japanese companies with eighteen one thousand eight hundred eighty jobs.
So is that primarily Fuji Film?
Um, Fuji Film is listed there and then, um, I'll share with you some of those other companies are. Of course, whatever, but go ahead.
Well, I'm just surprised it's Japan.
India, is India, is the nation of India's investment included in these? Is that assumed? Do we have Impulsys, ACL, Martin, Ford?
But that's not Morseville.
No, this is Morseville. This is Morseville specific data.
That's the reason, we're glad you're making those wishes because we want to get more Morseville.
And so the highlighted information contains information of Fuji Film, Baker, um, um, Sumo, Sumo, so, um, a Canadian post, Red Bull Australia, um, two German companies, including Knox and, um, Audition.
Okay, well, that's, I think we are naturally.
What, what is the definition of direct investment? If like a company, like what was the company you mentioned?
Soglius.
Soglius, okay. It is a German company. And they have a US headquarters here. So does that mean it is FDI like from Europe? I'm just trying to understand how it is.
Oh, so you're saying what is the definition of FDI as it relates to here?
Yeah.
Okay, so here, based on this, this is, um, where the original foreign headquarters is.
Okay.
It's, original headquarters is a foreign airport.
So then Lenevo is out of China, right?
Yeah.
So we don't see China there.
Is Lenevo in Morseville?
Primitive park.
When was the original investment made?
Uh, US, that's what it's IDA.
Yeah, that's part of the.
So it's maybe depending on the way that we're working.
Yeah.
That's not. I want to, um, I'm going to move on if I may. Move on to our action plan and highlighted recommendations. And so you have a document in front of you that is a condensed version of an action plan. It is.
Page thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I will, um, take some time to highlight a couple of action items that I think are very important to, to implement our economic development strategy. Um, we've touched on some of this throughout our discussion today. Um, and so as we work to, you know, to continue to promote economic prosperity, um, establish and define our target industries and quality jobs for Morseville. And I think we, I've presented some recommendations for targeted industries. I would like your feedback on those. I understand. I would like your feedback on those. I understand Councilmember body wanted to know more about of those targeted industries, are any susceptible to the supply chain disruption? If that's an affirmation, I'll circle back with council members on.
I'd also be interested if they're on the racks or the weighing, just generally as industries. Are these industries kind of on the way up?
Okay.
Or is AI gonna take all the jobs away?
Nobody else crystal ball.
No, that's crystal ball, but just generally your opinion on that.
Could we have any jobs there?
Yeah. And so we've talked about proactively engaging with existing businesses, so identifying and prioritizing key companies. We talked about that major, meeting that major list of employers. And so I've already received that list from Wake County Economic Development. But to many of you all's points, establishing, continue to establish touch points with those existing businesses and meeting with existing industry and their CEOs. And building in an opportunity for council members to meet if they so choose as well. Collaborating with educational institutions and community partners to address workforce needs. And not just working with NC State University. I'm getting my time. But also our sort of that probably the university. And building relationships with entities such as North Carolina Biotech Center, North Carolina Technology Association and Clean Tech Center, Research Triangle, Clean Tech Cluster. I would like to reiterate that I've already met with the North Carolina Biotech Center about emerging issues and trends in life sciences. And also prioritizing attendance at BIO, familiar with BIO, BIO is a conference held annually. I think it's very important if we attend to compete and recruit for life sciences that we have a presence there. So I plan on participating in BIO this May. And we will have a digital billboard slide, which is technically a PowerPoint slide. So, but I'll be happy there representing Morrisville.
Where is it?
Um, it's in Boston.
Boston, that's my style, I said it.
You told us in Boston.
GSK.
Yeah, yeah.
And as we look to recruit more foreign investment, there's also the opportunity to participate in Select USA Investment Summit. That's also an annual event that will be held in June. I don't have a lot of time. But one thing that I do want to share with you is I've already had discussions with Brandon and Giselle about participating in the economic development partnership of North Carolina's cooperative marketing program. That's an opportunity to participate in, with the state of North Carolina and other economic developers across the state in various events. For example, BIO Select USA to accompany them on site selection consultant visits where they go to various markets, including Chicago, Atlanta, and Dallas, and sell Morrisville's story. And not just have Wake County there selling our story, but us some ground doing the work ourselves. I had an opportunity to participate last year with Governor Cooper and other representatives from the process state. And so I think it's a valuable opportunity for Morrisville to be visible. And that's some of the, from an economic development marketing standpoint, that I recommend that we can, that we participate in. And I will stop there, cause I don't have.
And also, you're interested in me doing intercity visits?
Yes.
Raleigh sends a whole group. You've just been in that, I think that would be great networking and bring up a brand new bit.
I know that's something that Kristi, Kristi Moser with the Chamber is working on as well.
Yeah, she mentioned that at the board meeting for the Chamber this past, yeah, this, just this Friday, mentioned that. But also acknowledged that they don't have the budget to have her participate in anything like that right now. There was some conversation of potentially like alternating Tiffany one year, Kristi the next. I think there's more value in doing that together. But they, their budget is not such right now that that's likely but has any meaningful cost to it.
How much does it cost?
I think it's several thousand dollars, not depending on where they go and how much the travel is and things like that.
In what current person, in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty.
So Mayor Protem did say that this is an investment of the town in our economic prosperity. And so I think that we should send both of them for a period of meetings so that you can get aligned. Maybe it's okay after that, you tag team because you know each other. But right now you're both new. Why would we make you go independently because of a few thousand dollars? I, I, I see that as an investment. And I don't know what mechanism we need to work with the town manager on, but it, you have to go together, you have to get aligned, we need a stronger voice. That's why you're here, that's why we have a new president, because we need a lot more energy to overcome and be more competitive. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that's how I feel. I want you to be as successful for us as you can, and we need to give you the tools to be successful.
That was gonna be my suggestion, that we just send both of you.
I'd be on board with that.
Yeah, I think that's great, kind of alignment.
So I'll just throw out there, I know a lot of, a lot of folks that attend those, they get sponsored by the business community too. So I would hope maybe that they would, the Chamber would look into that, but.
Maybe not initially because the Chamber is kind of fragile right now. But I think that is definitely something we should explore.
So the intercity thing, like from my understanding, you know, a lot of people from Wake County have always asked, okay, why are you not coming? And obviously we don't have the funding and all that. But it is more for the business community to talk to the elected officials at that, in that trip and to get a look into that. And that's what, if you look, rally chambers, they go carry the staff, or staff along with the council and all they go. We are small now, I get it. But at the same time, the essence of why they're going is to have a, you know, connection and look together kind of stuff. That's, that's the underlying, you know. But going to places like BIO and all those has a bigger impact where you're radically interacting with the industry, so.
So maybe a part of that would be looking at our policy of electives don't go out of state. Cause that would be a bunch of.
But it's also funding, funding the economic diversity office for travel.
Sending them at this, at that time.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, saying, I'm basically saying that was the intent of intercity. Like, you know, they went to Seattle to look at their, you know, the industry, affordable housing, all those things. We do not have that kind of, they're different kind of, and some in Georgia for, or Florida for transit, you know.
Salt Lake City.
Salt Lake City, exactly, and all got COVID.
I, I think part of that item is funding travel for exploratory and community, community connections.
I also do think of it as funding, because to Liz's point about business sponsorships, I don't want to necessarily commit town funds to sponsoring a Chamber employee to go to conferences forever. I do think that going forward, they should look for sponsorship from the business community. But I think this, like, if we make it really clear to the Chamber that we're willing to fund this, like maybe maybe next year, like if they really can't get the sponsorship, that I think it's important for them to both go. I absolutely support that. But it's not something we already fund the Chamber, I just don't wanna, I don't want this to be an additional source of Chamber funding just because we do it one.
I think the town manager had something.
So I just think, no, we, I think a little to that point, I just, what goes into my mind is that there was some level of angst amongst the group as we worked through that services agreement. And what were we getting in return for, you know, a fifty thousand dollar agreement? Keep in mind, we also do some in-kind that adds cost to that. We also leased that space that adds cost to that. So, and I'm fully supportive, I fully agree that it's the right thing, they should attend together, they should work together. Just want to make sure we're thinking about it in that context. Because the other piece is, we'll have to, I think, work together to determine what those might look like for the remainder of this fiscal year. Because we can't just pay for her to go. We need to have perhaps a budget, you know, allocation there that specifies where that money is going because she's not a town employee. And then again, Kristi should be coming to you in the March-April window with sort of her first update of what's up with the Chamber and where they are with the services agreement. That's also then your opportunity to consider what are you willing to do in Act 26 with that Chamber agreement. So that's an opportunity to discuss, do you want to potentially do that for another year? And we can build that into the services agreement. And obviously she'll be expected to come and explain where they are with their budget and when are they gonna recover to do some of that, things like that.
Can I just give one last thought, since I still have the, okay.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, Vicki's giving me the stink eye.
I'm giving you the stink eye, cause she hasn't had her first stab at this.
No, let Ann finish her thought, please.
Let, let Ann go.
It's still my turn, settle down. I just.
The contract, we're coming back.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that we owe it to the Chamber to, to give Kristi a chance. You know, I, I know that we had some concerns about the Chamber, but I think that the Chamber could be a major development engine for us. If, and I think we, I mean, I think it's a brand new dip, was all that I was gonna say. Thank you. Sorry, Donna.
No, that's all right, it was Steve before me.
That's okay, you can go.
I fought for you.
So, um, to go on with what Liz said, you know, when I'm thinking about it, I don't see why the business community could not fund the Chamber president. Cause in the whole scheme of things, to Lenovo or Credit Suisse, one trip is not a whole lot for them. So I don't see why one of the businesses couldn't fund her or they share the cost between them. Or why doesn't Pathways or Spark fund them? Why do we do that? I guess I would open it up and try to get one of the Morrisville businesses to pay for it.
Ideally, but I mean, she's building those relationships now, and that's a ask.
But they're already in the Chamber.
To a certain extent. Lenovo a lot more used to be when Sarah was our lead.
But she, she could still use Emily Ziegler, right?
Understood, let's see, I got it.
Steve, yeah, my, um, just, I think, I mean, pretty much all of our points, I mean, I think you did a great job on this presentation. So the only other thing, I mean, just focus on startups, tech innovation and do all the great things. The only last organization that I think, and you may already know them, but I would really recommend you reading is the Tyne Carolinas Group. Tyne is a global organization, forty-five chapters around the world. Started with the Silicon Valley, got them on the wall as more than, he's the president. And they do a lot of mentorship, facilitating small businesses. And I really see a good fit to Morrisville's economic development in Tyne. So I would just throw that out there as somebody that, you probably already know them, but to get more involved with each other and see if the stuff that we can do with them as events and things like that. So I think it's something I'll look for weeks.
I think we did a really good job of addressing questions throughout the presentation and getting feedback on the action plans. And so, um.
So I think the, sort of the overarching question is, are you comfortable with where Tiffany is heading? And if there is anything that you think we didn't address or you have other questions, she's happy to try to take those now. Or again, we were, we're gonna follow up with the council or the retreat in general on Tuesday night. If you have other thoughts, we could certainly be prepared to answer questions there. But sort of looking generally for a thumbs up that you're supportive of the direction that Tiffany is heading in.
Yes, and you already said Tiffany, you're coming, gonna bring us quarterly reports, right? So that's, I think that's fabulous. I think we need to get this moving and then we'll tweak as we go along, all of us.
Do we have any ideas, Brandon, as a process, would you be fun with us emailing to the record, you know, the meeting first?
No, you can email her, if you and Kathy, Giselle and I just were in the loop of what the conversation, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Satish.
Yeah, I really like these slides, the Wake County real estate demand and trends that are, I'm trying to figure out. But we, can, can we get similar to Morrisville?
We can, once we, yes, that is a yes.
So because that would give, paint a different picture to understand what I, with so much inventory industrial in those things when compared to what you have. So the only reason I'm asking, because also I think one thing where I feel of more collaboration with the planning, especially Michelle's team, is a lot of requests must come to them, you know, like saying, okay, we need this or this zone or whatever. If that can, that data can be shared with you as to where the trend, and then you can analyze the data to see how it is moving. Because those, many, where I have our time is, we only get what is submitted to us or approved. We do not get, there will be, of every hundred requests coming, only one comes in for an approval. So the rest are ninety-nine, we don't even know what's going on. So what, it just gives us a trend of what.
And as we wrap, I just want to say once again what Tiffany said, let's continue to dominate as we can in clean technology. That's really nice, love to hear that, forward thinking.
So as we transition, I think the last thing I'll say in this context is, I think you can immediately see the value and the benefit in the position you approved and how critical it is to have someone with the right background and knowledge and expertise to do this work for us. So thank you for that. And I think you'll just continue to be impressed with what Tiffany's gonna be able to do for us. Our intention is to roll right into the go district discussion, if everybody's okay with that, we're gonna do that. So we will stay generally as.
Four and six slides to go.
We're, we're gonna start, and if we don't finish, then we will come back to you.
Well, this is important to you.
It is.
I got it.
Oh, thank you.
So Tiffany and I are gonna tag team on this next one. I'm gonna start, I'll hand it over to her, and then I'll be wrapping up again.
Michelle Stegall, Planning Director.
Oh, sorry, we are Michelle Stegall, Planning Director in Morrisville. I would suggest, if we could maybe hold questions until we're ready for the trade-off, that that might be a good time to have any discussions when you're not necessarily waiting till the end. I think the need of the discussion is probably gonna come at the end of her. So, let's see.
Just enter it.
So the goal of the discussion is going to be to review and analyze the development ordinance's impact on economic development with a particular focus on the business activity of any district. And the gateway, we're just trying to, I recommend making some solutions at the end. We're gonna start by reviewing the history and current zoning of the area, reviewing some of the development that has occurred. I am then gonna hand it off to Tiffany, who is going to talk about some of the challenges of the current zoning and some of the evolving industry landscape that we're seeing. Go over some of the Wake County real estate data and impact analysis, stakeholder engagement that was done early January. And then we'll get into potential amendments and some next steps and questions to the council. So I do think that there is a benefit to revisiting the history of the district. It's always good to remember what decisions were made in the past, why those decisions were made to provide a framework for the future. So when the 2021 land use plan update occurred, a sub-area plan, as you know, was done for the McCrimmon Corridor. That plan evolved over a three-year period. There was vast amounts of public engagement. The McCrimmon Corridor, about three hundred acres of property. The McCrimmon Corridor, about three hundred acres of property, was zoned industrial. At the time, I think there was an understanding or a thought that we wanted to do something other than industrial in that district, which is the reason that it was incorporated into the sub-area planning and some revisioning of that area that occurred. That adopted vision for the corridor did include a recommendation for a unique mix of core accounting uses. Those uses included office and multifamily along with commercial restaurants, entertainment, recreation. There's a lot of text in the plan that talks about the character of the area that we wanted to create along the Crimmon extension. The plan talks about buildings being oriented towards the street with attractive facades on the Crimmon Parkway. Off-street parking reserved to the side and rear of buildings to minimize visual impact and bring uses closer to the Crimmon for increased walkability. Service and retail uses being situated in close proximity to the Wake Competition Center, and structured parking was encouraged. So after adoption of the land use plan and the sub-area plan in 2021, we knew we needed to move fast with some amendments for this area because that road was in and development was coming and we wanted to get ahead of it. So in the summer of 2021, Town Council adopted a number of UDO amendments, airport overlay district amendments, and rezoned the area from industrial management to the business activities in the district to implement that vision. Council also adopted a Gateway Overlay District. That's where the term Go District comes from. This was seen as a new gateway to the town. And there were some unique standards adopted with that district. There was the separation requirement, a standard between multifamily developments. Buildings up the street with parking to the New York Side, reinforcing that vision of the land use plan. Ground floor commercial required for multifamily developments that went along a major or minor thoroughfare or collector's street. And we were looking forward to updating the tree preservation and buffer requirements in the code, but that project was yet to come. So in this area, we went ahead and said that a hundred fifty percent of the requirement would need to be met. In the summer of 2021, when staff brought forward those amendments, we were already seeing some interest in biom manufacturing. So staff did meet with the development community. We worked with them and collaborated on a proposed definition to allow biom manufacturing in this area to create a new definition for biom manufacturing. We brought that forward to Town Council as part of all of the various updates that were ultimately adopted. And Council may recall that you spent some time on that definition, revising it, providing input. But adding that biom manufacturing was a departure from the vision. Industrial was not initially envisioned on this corridor. Therefore, it was purposely kind of restricted to that biom manufacturing use that we were seeing, wanting to make sure that we were staying within the original vision, but also seeing it as an opportunity to meet some of the market demand that we were seeing at the time. If you look at the picture on the right side of the screen, that's an image from your land use plan, which is an image of how the corridor could potentially build out. You see these images and plans all the time, and they're just ideas or concepts. Doesn't mean that things will build out this way. But when you look at it, I think it's interesting that in this case, the corridor has built out remarkably similar to what you see on this plan. And where you look at Spark and Pathway Triangle, they really took up the spaces that were originally envisioned as office spaces. And then you see that the mix of other uses intermingled in there. But as soon as those amendments were adopted, as you know, Spark, Pathway Triangle, and other UDO came in. And it's really this unique cool mix of uses, really unlike you see in other areas that's happened a lot in this corridor in front of the watch. So what are we seeing in terms of development along the corridor? Just for context, as you continue with your discussions. I'm going to start on the east side of the road. You have Mooresville two point oh, which is a multifamily development. Just south of that is Pathway Triangle. Then you have the Wake Competition Center. You have Rush Hour and Urban Air. You have Pet Paradise, which is in Pet Kennel. You have Novel Communities and the new Land of Thousand Hills Coffee Shop. And we have had place-to-middle meetings with a potential banquet hall looking at this side of the street as well and a potential miniature golf course looking on this side of the street. I'm not saying either of those that have happened. We meet with people all the time, probably about seventy-five percent of them are forward, but there is interest in those potential uses as well. If you look on the other side of the street, Mooresville one point oh, another multifamily development. So you have a Spark development. You have Bainbridge looking at another development, the existing Bainbridge development that's been on the corner of Aviation and Crimmon for a while now. So that's kind of the mix of uses. These are all under construction or through. And then did highlight these kind of significant parcels left for redevelopment or left for development, so you can see that as well. In terms where you might see potential new industrial, you're probably just looking at those larger blue areas on the south side of the street. The other ones are too small for anything significant. Most likely, you're going to see whatever retail or restaurant use there. But they are odd-shaped parcels, so some creativity is going to be needed to look at all of those. When we're talking about the Business Activities Center District, I did just also want to note that in addition to the Crimmon Corridor, the former Outlet Mall is also zoned BAC. So that is the Stitch that was in the heat day. That property was rezoned to BAC back in 2020. Therefore, if you make any amendments to permitted uses in the BAC district, they will apply to the Outlet Mall property as well. We're also going to touch on some other potential amendments to development standards. You could apply those to the BAC district, which would apply those to the Outlet Mall as well. Or you could choose to just apply those to the Gateway Overlay District. And I'm going to stop there because these next slides are Tiffany's. Any questions about history, land use plan, current development?
I didn't use my blue thing. I apologize. I'm trying to kind of connect the dots from yesterday to today. And yesterday, we talked about the Public Works Facility. And we have to explore, you know, within Mooresville, what is a suitable place based on industrial kind of usage? Would, if we change the UDO and do these modifications for light manufacturing, a lot of the stipulations is everything has to be self-contained, no outside storage, blah, 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 blah. Is, if we want to move a public works facility, would it even be possible within this specific land area that we're looking at? I'm trying not to...
Limit our...
Limit the innovative possibilities that we discussed yesterday.
Yeah, that's a good question. So the property that Mark mentioned yesterday with the existing building, that is in an industrial and industrial zoning district. So that allows for a whole range of uses. If you were looking at one of these vacant houses on the Crimmon, just adding light manufacturing, which is the recommendation would not get you there. A public works facility is under another use category, but we could add that use category if you wanted that flexibility.
Because I know Mayor Potem mentioned that looking at a Class A building and, you know, adding different functions, you know, for town use, not just public works, but maybe expanding that was very interesting. And these are Class A buildings, as I understand.
I think Mayor and I talked about that a little bit as well. And I think we also want to keep in mind it's our highest investment use. You know, we've only got sort of so much property that might develop into, you know, depending on where you go with this Go District zoning. And do you want to take some of that if the changes you make, I think, or anticipating perhaps, probably went wrong, but will maybe kick off some sooner leases and use of those properties? And I think we've always believed for some time that, you know, once somebody kicks that door open, it's going to stay open and people will keep coming. So not to say we can't do that, but I think we want to consider that as well.
Right, I just think that it's so new and so fresh that we need to kind of think about downstream effects. And this presentation was created before we had our conversations yesterday, but I just want to be thoughtful about how we're restricting and what that might mean for future options.
So Michelle, just so I understand, any changes we may choose to make, if we make them specifically for the Go District, won't affect anything else?
So the only places in town that are zoned Business Activities Center are the Go District and the former Outlet Mall. You make a use change to the Business Activities Center, it's going to apply to Go. Because when we get to the development standards, we can build it into the Go Overlay District. So it doesn't apply to the Outlet Mall.
That's okay, okay. There's an option. Okay.
And I think when we talk about, this presentation is very focused on the Go District. I will say, we've had conversations, a little bit of a different conversation in relation to the Outlet Mall. And if someone were to come in and say conditional rezoning for that property, it's a little different with its size and location and surrounding uses. Some higher level industrial uses could potentially work there. I wouldn't proactively rezone it to industrial if you don't want a concrete plant or a waste transfer facility or something like that. But for a conditional rezoning, restrict those heavier uses and maybe even do a conditional rezoning, open up more opportunities there. But that's time for someone looking for a property.
Thank you.
Will you, when you leave the Stitch, do you need a comment about whatever changes we made might affect that somebody will... I guess we have to go back to those uses and what it is. And just be whatever change made or applied there.
If you change the permitted uses, just be mindful that you're changing it for that property as well, not just the Go District.
Well, that's a good pattern what's going on in here. Right now, where are we at with the Stitch? I mean, that's a little bit mysterious, but I just was curious what the status is. Did you type pulled out and you're still...
Being actively marketed, this change could help them as well.
Oh, okay. That's all I would need. We're probably about to find... Sorry, I had a discussion.
We have an hour.
We do have?
Yeah, we're till twelve-thirty, so we're pacing okay. But thank you.
So moving on, just further of this, the current development we have in the BAC, including the Gateway Overlay District, is the Pathways, Triangle, and Spark properties. Both properties right now are currently marketed as great products for life science industry. I think it's fair to say that many of you have already heard some feedback from these developers. And that's one of the reasons why we're sitting here today and having this discussion because we express some concerns regarding the current zoning as we've seen shifts in the industry trends over the last, I would say, probably year or two. And this slide here is just for reference, we're going to come back to this later on in the discussion, but this is Pathways building in Massachusetts, similar layout, fully built, so it's not concept. However, the active uses there are not just life sciences. There's some advanced, smaller scale, advanced manufacturing that's taking place. And this is an example of showing you how it's existing in the system that they currently build out in Massachusetts.
So what is it that they're manufacturing?
Some robotics.
Say that again.
Robotics. Some of the businesses here in this, in Davis are robotics companies.
They're making robotics or they're using robotics?
Making robotics.
Okay.
So talk a little bit about challenges of current zoning. I want to take some time to share with you some information we received from Wake County Economic Development. And this information is based on the request for information for economic development projects that they've received primarily from the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. It's based on 2023 data. The 2024 data has not been shared yet, not filed and shared. And so the report itself is kind of extensive, several, several slides, but I wanted to pull out some key data that could be useful for our discussion today. Of the projects that have been received by Wake County Economic Development, forty-five percent of the projects are looking for existing buildings. And so you see that here, time, time, time of year. I noticed that that's gone down since 2022, but they're continuing to look for existing buildings. Up to next slide? And of those existing buildings, sixty-three percent are looking for industrial properties. You will notice, and not that we're talking about that now, but you'll notice the demand for offices sits at seven percent. So you see that there has been a decrease in office space. I'm just pointing that out because I know it's probably a... And I think this slide is very important because we talk, we know we're looking for, companies are looking for existing buildings. We know sixty-three percent are looking for industrial properties. But I think one thing to highlight is that of the sixty-three percent that we're looking for existing industrial property, they're also looking for clear ceiling heights that are at least twenty-eight feet. So the issue that we have in Mooresville is that there is one area where there is at least clear ceiling heights of twenty-eight feet, and that's the Crimmon. And that's the Spark and Pathways properties. So let's say we're looking to compete for projects that have these site materials. We can't do so at Eastwood, we can't do so with Southport, we can't do so at Stitch. And so that's kind of limited our opportunity to compete for these projects.
Because they're smart industry?
Not just because of the industry specifically, but because of the building requirements that the companies that are looking to locate have. So they're looking for buildings with ceiling heights that are at least twenty-eight clear ceiling heights. And those, those properties are older properties. And when they were built, the ceiling heights were averaging probably about nineteen feet.
So would, but are you saying that they would, they wouldn't locate there anyway because the buildings are already built?
No, I'm not saying that they wouldn't locate there. I'm saying if they're looking, already looking for existing buildings. But of the existing buildings that have the existing buildings we have, don't fit their need because the ceiling heights are not high enough, so they can't go there.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying if they're looking for existing buildings, the Stitch and the other buildings, they're already built, so there's no... I don't understand what the, what the ask is there. Like, we can't tack two feet of building. I feel like I might be misunderstanding something.
So, so, so what I'm saying is, they're looking for the eastern market, so they're looking for buildings that are already there, up, up existing. And let's say some communities might have buildings that are already existing, but their buildings have ceiling heights that are larger and higher. And we don't because our building heights are just, they're older buildings. They, they're not able to, they were not, I think, refurbished or refurbished. they're older buildings, they, they're not able to, they were not refurbished or refurbished, and so they don't fit their, their needs. So we don't have inventory that's suitable or can be easily adapted to fit the projects that we're trying to build.
So are you saying that going forward, we should build the buildings higher?
Yes.
But you said Spark and Pathways does meet that criteria.
Yes, that's true. So Spark and Pathways, Pathways does, but what I'm saying is, as we try to compete, we, we are limited on the properties that we have that we can actually compete with.
Okay.
And then further in this session, we'll talk a little bit more about how the zoning itself impacts it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're just clarifying that there's just increments where we can meet the needs when they're looking for an existing site that's built on spec.
Well, existing with criteria that's above nineteen feet.
Right, I understand. We're talking about East Ridge and those. They already exist. We don't limit them. They could tear and rebuild, they're really looking for existing sites.
Yes, and to be very clear, there are some projects that we do compete using East Ridge and Southport that they fit the needs of projects, but then there are some, some advanced manufacturing projects that they do not.
And that's a topic for today.
Okay. And then along the lines of real estate demand and trends, of course, we still continue to see the need for greenfield space. And so several projects looking at, you know, less than twenty-five acres, but if you look at as a whole, in Morrisville, I believe maybe twelve acres of land that could be built out, right? And then, so we definitely know we're not competing for projects that are looking for a hundred acres or more. And so that's just something to think about mind for other projects that Wake County is receiving, and our ability to compete in today's market. This next chart shows a better breakdown of by industry and real estate parameters per project, so it gives you a better understanding of the way the real estate needs look per industry. I'll point out advanced manufacturing. You see the average square footage along the lines, about a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet. With life sciences, you see eighty-seven thousand square feet, and then about twenty-five acres. And start looking at ceiling height, ceiling height requirements, thirty-one feet for life sciences, about thirty-three feet for advanced manufacturing. Of course, headquarters nineteen feet, because that's office space and things of that nature. Even clean tech, the average ceiling height is more than up to thirty feet. And so I'm going to guess a lot of that, when you think about the advanced equipment that's coming into manufacturing and producing these products, when you go into the buildings in this, in the, in the Bay areas, you have this large equipment that's contained inside the building, but you need that space for the equipment to be able to sit between the bays. And so that's what's driving up the ceiling height requirements for a lot of these companies. And to talk further about industry trends that we're seeing from Wake County and from the state, I talked a little bit about this in the presentation earlier today. Thirty-seven percent of the projects that Wake County Economic Development is receiving from EDPNC, and that we're receiving from Wake County themselves, advanced projects, advanced manufacturing. And I say again, advanced manufacturing does encompass several different sectors within that umbrella. Wake County is continuing to have advanced manufacturing as a targeted industry themselves, but I want us to be very clear about how we're defining advanced manufacturing. You know, advanced manufacturing refers to the manufacturing that includes process innovation, high technology, equipment, motivation, skilled workforce, cross industry applications. I think that's important. When we think about advanced manufacturing, think about the fact that it encompasses information technology as well, because we need to send that, be the software, the signal to the electronic component, component to make the robotics or the medical device work for life sciences. So, and, and also when we think about advanced manufacturing, it's an industry with high growth potential and scalability. And so, but it's not just one particular industry itself, it's a layer over several industries. Any questions about this information so far? This next slide shows some highlighted advanced manufacturing projects that information we received from Wake County. And so taking the opportunity to lump this advanced manufacturing data together into some subcategories, and these are advanced manufacturing projects that we've received, and it associated capital investment with these projects. They range from aviation, defense, headquarters, advanced manufacturing headquarters, advanced manufacturing R and D, and clean tech life sciences. So many of these projects we were not able to compete just because of the nature of the project itself. And so this gives you kind of an idea of how much capital investment is out there, or what could potentially be in the pipeline. Later in the discussion, I'll review an impact analysis over four projects and break down those four projects to give additional information today.
Mayor Potem has a question.
So, going back to the previous slide, thirty-seven percent, right, and you're, you know, excellent, you're giving us this split of advanced manufacturing. Forget the land that is needed, you know, how money of that thirty-seven percent is a missed opportunity that we have, not considering the zoning, but real, like, I would say, yeah, just zoning as one of the categories. Land, you know, we can't make land, so we'll cut it out. So, and the current zoning that you're planning to propose, okay, how much, you know, will that catch be a catch basically? So, for example, like Amgen, like the Media Mission Fund, even if it was, we would have not got it because of the advanced manufacturing, like, you know, it's like manufacturing, industrial manufacturing kind of a thing. Because I'm just trying to call, what are we missing out in these kind of things, so that it gives us a better sense to be futuristic. You know, if I'm clear, I don't know.
What I'm hearing is, we'll get a better understanding from a number standpoint, what is the true potential of what we're missing, based on projects received from life sciences?
Yeah, so as you, as you, like, whatever you're recommending today, you know, with the zoning changes, okay, we again filter that thirty-seven percent through it. What gets?
Opportunities.
Opportunities that we get out of it, and minus opportunities of land, then what are the kind of things that we are missing out? Intentionally, like, you know, if high industrial, we cannot, you know, that's fine, but at least I want to know how it is going, because if there are any other catch basings that we need to, this is the time to look.
Great, it's the opportunity cost, you know, because we don't, we don't want those coal burning plants in the Morrisville, like the council member. But we do want life manufacturing. What, what's the delta between today and these changes that we can capitalize on? Thirty-three million, fifty million, a hundred million? You know, what's the potential gain?
Yeah, what opportunities open up?
And while I have rough numbers, I think the opportunity to sit back and look, and just, because we know roughly, okay, there were fifty projects that, that we were not able to sit with, but of those fifty, how many did we truly want to submit on, you know, given the opportunity?
It's not the question of truly, I'm like, you know, from, from the rules that we have.
Okay.
What will get really approved in our framework is what I'm trying to, it's not truly, it's like a different thing, is, is an opinion. I'm saying, as for UDO or those kind of things that we can apply.
Are you interested in saying, you know, if it's only just a slight modification with these changes, we need to reevaluate if there's additional changes?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm getting to. Like, you know, of the thirty-seven, say, say fifty companies, and we're doing this change today, but it is only catching ten companies, and we're still losing forty out. And out of the forty, say, twenty were land related issues, so which is fine. So if we still have that twenty, what is that we're missing? And that's where I wanted to look.
And what would it take to?
What did it take? If, if, you know, is it too much, or is it like a gray area that we can, you know, still flex it to get back?
So, things important, aligning our zoning with growth. And so we talked a little bit about emerging issues, excuse me, emerging trends, emerging industries, our target industries, and our focus on life sciences and bio manufacturing where we are today. And we're going to laugh at a couple of slides I have, a couple of, trust me, I'll be there. But, so again, our community has identified life sciences as a key industry. And I talked to you a little bit about being more inclusive about life sciences, right? And as we think about life sciences, all the components that come up under the umbrella. So when I, we start talking about the challenges of zoning, one thing that stood out to me was we focus on life sciences, but in this area, we're also focused on just bio manufacturing. But how can we really unlock the full potential of the quarter itself? And the one thing that just kind of stood out was unlocking the full potential, medical devices. That stood out to me, and, bear with me for one second, because I said I was going to do it, and I'm going to do it. It's very important to be thinking. So.
Show and tell.
I can talk about medical devices. I have EpiPen, so I'm not going to carry around everybody, but bear with me. So, and here's my spiel. So every, so about thirty-two million people have food allergies, right? It's very dear to me, because my kids have allergies. It's very important that I keep these things with me at all times, because if not, they can get exposed to seafood, peanuts, and go to an athletic shop. And so when we think about medical devices, and we think about life sciences and bio manufacturing, right there on the quarter, I can take this, build, create the drug for this EpiPen, but I'm not in a position currently to create or manufacture the medical device to deliver it, based on the way it's written today. And so when you think about a business or a company who wants to streamline their manufacturing process, they want to be able to do everything in one location. When you think about Rockwell, do you, would you want to make this component here, and then go down the street and make a component and bring it back together? You know, that causes difficulties sometimes for processes, and process improvement. So I had to share that with you. That's probably on the next couple slides to say all that to say. Unlocking our full potential and going beyond bio manufacturing, that's one thing that I wanted us to consider. We'll talk about the challenges of our existing zoning, and again, going beyond bio manufacturing. And that was just one example of how do we, we'll talk about advanced manufacturing, but even when we talk about our target industry of life sciences, making sure that we are able to encompass all of the companies that could actually really benefit from locating there, in that space.
So I, I also, I have asthma, and asthma is a medicine that has a device that is used for implementation. So I get it. I think I did not realize that we have a developmental illness that prohibits that kind of manufacturing, because I think that it's hand in hand, and to me, it's just obvious, you would want to have both, because a lot of delivery devices are needed for today's medicines. And if you could, you know, enlighten us, and Michelle enlighten us a little bit, you know, maybe not today, but in the future, how that translates for the business community and what we can do to support, you know, devices.
So.
So with our current zoning, I mean, I guess we all have a personal example now, but I wear a continuous glucose monitor. It's a medical device, which I guess you would be able to manufacture, but it has software. So it, it has a, the software connects the device to my doctor, and so she gets a report of my blood glucose throughout the month, as long as I'm wearing the device. So is that the kind of thing that our current UDO would permit, because it's just software, like you build it and then you just put the software on it? Or is that kind of thing also restricted currently?
Yeah, and going back to that original vision, when you went away from industrial to BAC, purposely made it restrictive.
Yeah.
And it was, it was targeted at bio manufacturing, because there was an obvious market, an opportunity to use that market. But that definition points to using a biological or chemical process to manufacture something. So, I mean, we are recommending a change for a reason, and are wanting to open it up to allow some of these things.
Uh, your comments?
No, you, you can go first.
So, so a classic example, I think, what I'm hearing is, okay, it came to us, I still remember the post session that you went through, we basically said, we don't care about the manufacturing, we just want the research. That was the words that we used in the, and that is exactly what has happened. They kept their research here. They took the time and, like, the policies. And, and you are saying, kind of have that supply chain together, so that if we can have a better competitor, is correct, you know?
I think.
No, that's all, that's all.
That's one way we can truly build a industry cluster, and that's part of our, our strategy, industry cluster cultivation. And when we build that cluster, and then not just that the supporting, you know, we already have the technology that's already here. When Councilmember Robidey talked about the, the software that's needed for her medical device, if you think about, you know, the synergy that's created through the existing target industries that we already have, but allowing for that type of manufacturing, the drug field from start to finish in, in an area, further builds out that cluster.
Hundred percent agree, because that's pretty much the standard, even if you look at McMed, you know, McMed Hospital is there, but all these specialties are all at arm's length, you know, so that the chain, supply chain is pretty much the same, they're the same.
Bio manufacturing is very much.
So, I mean, I'm in on what you're saying. I guess I, I'm very curious to know exactly, I'd like for us to just cut to the chase, and you guys tell us, what changes do we need to make to the UDO to make this light manufacturing possible?
If you ask, because you have other slides.
We can, no, we can cut.
I wanted to say that, like, five minutes.
We're all, we're all.
Let's do this one. I will, okay, I will get to this one. Stakeholder engagement. On January seventh, we held a meeting with stakeholders, the BAC, BAC district. And this slide shows some feedback that we received. We categorized it based on competitiveness, or infrastructure, development, and community. Presence at the, excuse me, at the meeting, the town of Morrisville, Keen Street Properties, Trinity Capital, Klishman Wakefield, Wake County Economic Development, Bainbridge, Leon Family, and Wake County competition. And some of the feedback we received, we'll see the private developer has concerns about limited competitiveness due to. due to restricted zoning, um, and vacancies despite property interest. Um, Wake County Economic Development shared their concerns, um, growth in the advanced manufacturing, um, sector, um, seeing significant growth, um, and data supports need for zoning updates, um, as well as Bainbridge, Bainbridge and Leon Family shared their concern about housing needs and the ability to, um, support this growth by multifamily developers. Um, we also had comments about infrastructure, you know, considering the impact on water, um, and wastewater resources that life sciences could potentially have in the area. And then also concerns about traffic impact. Um, from a development standpoint, there were some, um, our multifamily developers talked about wanting clarification on building design and purpose, and then also making sure that the corridor is attractive. Um, well, stating that the corridor was specifically attracted to the, to them because of its proximity to employment centers. And that's what's drawing the multifamily here. Um, also, Wake County, um, Competition Center, um, they expressed the importance of the diverse business community. And then also some very specific questions, they, um, very specific technical questions on design and flexibility. And that's, um, in a nutshell, an overview of the feedback that we received during that meeting. Were there any questions regarding?
It's okay to go faster. It is okay.
I was just.
Okay, so before we get to the specific recommendations, um, did want to touch base on some of the infrastructure because we thought it was important to make sure we're expanding the uses along this corridor that the infrastructure could support it. So, um, just to be very brief about it, Duke Energy indicated that they did not see any immediate issues. Um, we did take some time looking at the roadway, uh, because again, McCrimmon was never intended to be an industrial corridor, so the road was not designed to support three hundred acres of industrial. Um, but we think we're okay here. Um, McCrimmon Parkway was designed to accommodate up to three percent truck traffic. That's your tractor trailers, semi truck kind of traffic, um, with an average of three hundred twenty-four vehicle trips a day. Um, if the whole corridor was industrial, it would be an issue. But with Spark, Pathway Triangle and the limited additional industrial opportunity we have, we think we'll be okay. We did spend some time looking at loading docks, loading bays with what we know of from Pathway Triangle and Spark. Um, Pathway Triangle has the plans in for phase one and phase two, so in total, they have thirty-one loading bays. Um, Spark right now is fifteen, and they have additional phases to build out. So we're at forty-six, which is higher than we had anticipated based on, you know, the earlier collaboration and research we had. Um, but we do believe that the road could accommodate additional truck traffic to allow some zoning change.
You just said forty-six. Just clarify, what is that?
Um, loading bays.
For whom?
Um, Pathway Triangle, a total of thirty-one. That is at full buildout for them. Pathway Triangle right now is at fifteen loading bays, based on the plans submitted to date. They have additional plans yet to submit.
Oh, I'm sorry, so forty six, I, I.
Forty-six combined is where we're at right now.
Okay, but there's more to come.
There's more to come.
Because I would say, just so you, the, the traffic would be my biggest concern here. So as always, you're addressing it and it's more than I think we're gonna be okay. That would be my only concern.
So that was actually, I, two things at first was gonna be that thinking we'll be okay is not inspiring.
Yeah.
Tremendous confidence. How are we gonna make sure that we're okay? Because I, I mean, if, if, I, I was a hundred percent on board with, you know, whatever you guys want to do. Quite frankly, it sounds like it's all amazing ideas, but if we're, if we're saying we think we're gonna be okay with McCrimmon Parkway, that gives me pause about the proposed changes.
Yeah, it will ultimately depend on who the users are. So when that with Pathway, um, when we had the stakeholder meeting, they did note that depending on the user, not all the loading bays may be used. They could all be used, they could all not be used. Depending on the business, the frequency of traffic going to and from a site could be vastly different. So just very back of napkin, we're at forty-six loading bays now. Let's assume they're all in use. Let's assume one trip in and out to each day, you're at a hundred trips. Um, but we have two phases of Spark left. And then your only other industrial opportunities are really those areas that were highlighted, um, on the map earlier, towards the south side.
Right, I get all that, but do we, once, do we have control over what they lease and how many loading bays there are, or no?
So we can talk about that when we get into potential UDO, UDO updates.
Okay.
One of the things we could do if it is a concern is limit the number of loading bays on these buildings moving forward. That is something you could consider. It's not something that we were recommending at this point, but we wanted to put it out there as something that you could do.
Okay, and the other question I had was, I understand that McCrimmon is fine for this type of, assuming they're fine for this type of traffic, or we hope it is, but are there any other roads that we have to be concerned about? McCrimmon is NC fifty-four on the one side and then, um, airport, oh, like.
Yeah, airport, aviation.
So are, do we have to be concerned about any of those roads for the same reasons?
Those were constructed to a higher standard. I believe those roads are on the NC DOT truck route map as well.
Okay.
Will international drive eventually connect to Stevens Park Drive? Isn't that supposed to be connected at some point?
It connects up, so then it's gonna go out to airport and out to McCrimmon, is that what you're asking?
Well, right now, I'm looking at Google Maps. It looks like it, on this, that it has the potential connect to this road called Stevens Park Drive that comes in behind, uh, Spark and then comes out at McCrimmon Parkway.
Yes, it connects.
Yes.
So will they connect?
That connection is done.
Okay, so I'm just, so international already has eighteen-wheelers going along it already. I mean, could that be a, a potential second or an additional way in for trucks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, but they'll also come out.
Yeah.
They'll also come out on McCrimmon. They have to load and then unload. They can go both ways.
Yeah, they can come into the back way of Spark, come in that way, never get on McCrimmon.
With water and sewer and talking to the town of Cary, um, they think it's likely Pathway and Spark would need to do sewer line enhancements, so that's the line going from the main to their buildings. Um, those are put in at eight inch. If we're looking at more industrial type of uses, that line size will probably need to increase. They indicated that that cost will be on them. Um, they just asked that we continue to monitor, they are part of our site plan review process, to make sure we don't hit any capacity limits with them. And then we do still. We do still need to touch base with Dominion Gas. I'm just, I'm not anticipating that there's gonna be an issue, but we do want to make sure to do that if something comes up, we'll let you know.
Yeah, um, going back to the loading docks, I feel, um, that should not be a constraint because these are all light manufacturing and I don't anticipate like even one trip, you know, for an eighteen-wheeler to fill up and go back and forth. It's not like a vitamins or Walmart where there's steady flow of things to be going in. Because by eliminating it, what are we losing is also the portion, right? So they may not use it, but the option to have it is just, you know, because these are advanced manufacturing and there's a lot of forklifting and all this, which I mean, they're not necessarily eighteen-wheeler.
Bless you, bless you, bless you.
So I'm gonna skip this one. Um, again, everyone looked ahead. Um, the recommendation is that we keep it simple, um, and that we add light manufacturing as a permitted use along this corridor. Um, I highlighted a couple parts of the light manufacturing definitions. Um, the one that I think is really key is that all manufacturing activities are deemed entirely within the building. And any noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare, vibration resulting from the manufacturing are confined entirely within the building. So the idea is if you're driving down the street, you're neighboring commercial property, you're living in one of the apartments next door, the impact to you shouldn't be any different. Whether it's bio manufacturing, whether it's a light manufacturing company that does some sort of medical device manufacturing from the outside, it should look and feel the same. The impacts to adjacent properties should be the same. So that is really the idea there. Um, Councilmember Bender?
Yeah, is there anything we can do to, well, the what I'm, where I'm going is, on this previous slide where it listed different projects, there was a mention of advanced manufacturing for transformers, which is kind of scary.
Which, um.
It's one we skipped.
Impact analysis?
Yeah, on slide twenty-eight. So I wouldn't want us to be doing transformers. So is there anything we can do to limit manufacturing to where, to limit the waste products?
Well, that would.
So we didn't, wouldn't have hazardous waste?
That would fall under, um, heavy, medium and heavy manufacturing. So it wouldn't be allowed as a light manufacturing anyway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that is a good example of why we are not recommending adding advanced manufacturing to the code. So advanced manufacturing, to be honest, has been a term that evolved and started being widely used publicly about a year ago and has confused a lot of people in a lot of communities, it confused a lot of development attorneys. And that term continues to evolve and change. And I've even heard that, um, some of the forms that come in from the state that they may even be changing and on some others dropdown menus on, on kind of what you select when you're submitting for. So this is a new term. It's an evolving term. And it is a term, um, that accommodates a lot of different types of industries. And Tiffany's alluded to some of those, but it could be pharmaceutical manufacturing, it could be aerospace defense manufacturing, EV manufacturing, um, Councilmember Bender, you just hit on another one. Um, so we're recommending that we just look at what are the impacts to the adjacent properties? If you can't tell what's in the building, um, let's not lose ourselves even more. I think light manufacturing, um, will provide more flexibility over time as well as industry sectors evolve and change.
But should we do anything, add something here to protect ourselves from the possibility of something that qualifies as light manufacturing but could still produce something that is a byproduct, that's a hazardous waste?
So, um, I did want to mention, because our recommendation's light manufacturing, the first part of that definition talking about kind of using pre-assembled parts and putting it together, and Pathway Triangle praised that as a potential concern. Um, we did not, however, want to go to medium manufacturing because then you start processing from raw materials and that gets into a heavier type of operation. And with that definition as well, um, when you get into medium, there is some noise, odor, smoke. All that stuff that you're talking about, um, it may be at a low level, but it starts to be perceptible outside of the building.
Okay.
Um, so we're, we're recommending keeping bio manufacturing, so you get the, sell the raw material for bio manufacturing and combining that with the light manufacturing. To, to add some of those protections that you're talking about.
So I believe if we get advanced manufacturing and bio steel.
So, so in short, what I'm hearing is, um, instead of using advanced manufacturing, you're using the word light manufacturing within the permit of everything within the building states and not, it's a secondary manufacturer. Like I know Pathway, they had a client who was interested in solar panels, SMDs. So it was not creating solar panels, but like SMDs or, you know, so those kind of things can be done because it's a secondary, not the primary producer.
It likely be, we have some questions because when you start assembling, that'll bring noise, vibration. Um, but yes, we, um, these are common kind of zoning terms. You look across codes, advanced manufacturing, we had to look to some country in Ohio to find advanced manufacturing. And that was all really IT technology, you know, in those definitions that we found. So other communities in the region are using very similar definitions to ours on most of these industrial uses. The difference that you're seeing in, say, Holly Springs, is that companies are really wanting to do industrial.
And, and I think talking about the hazard, the bi-formal for, uh, creates a lot of bio hazards, you know, like, that is standard that any green hospital, and like, you know, that is there. And I'm sure, you know, they have mechanisms of how to dispose it in the right manner.
Okay, just two things, just following up on my other comment and Ann's comment about traffic, being concerned about that. I think we're in this situation because we were afraid, afraid of what potentially could be in this area and we wanted to eliminate, um, a lot of, um, uses that we would not be thrilled to have in this area. So I don't wanna limit the number of bays because I'm afraid it's gonna cause traffic that may never materialize. So we need to figure out some other way to, I appreciate that suggestion, but I'm not sure that, I'm not, I'm not confident that solves that concern over traffic. So anyhow, just saying that. Um, so have you shared this with the folks, the stakeholders you've met with? Have you shared this with them yet? And does this satisfy their, all their concerns or not? Just so I know, I'm not telling you to do that, just wanna know.
They, so we had, we got, had a feedback session from them. Um, and then, so that feedback, we took some of their recommendations, not all of their recommendations? Um, and then prepared this presentation for you. We did share this presentation with all of the stakeholders that attended that meeting and told them that we would circle back after the town council's retreat to make sure that we are keeping those lines of communication open as we continue to then, you know, draft amendments. And so we are planning on circling back with them, um, drafting amendments, sharing those proposed amendments with them. I do look refiting after that and eyeing a potential, um, March PBD meeting to start that formal, um, text amendment process.
Right, thank you.
So, so what was left on? You know, that's why I'm also curious, I'm curious about, uh, you said you took some, you didn't take others. So this one, it came high level, what was left?
Yeah, um, Pathway Triangle did express some concern about the first part of the light manufacturing definition, that it needed to be predominantly, I said predominantly, not always, um, from previously prepared materials of finished product, products or parts. that it needed to be predominantly, I said predominantly, not always, from previously prepared materials of finished product, products or parts. We did not want to open it up to raw materials, because again, you do tend to get into heavier types of activities when you do that. So that is one suggestion that we did not bring forward to you.
Go ahead. Sorry, I, um, so they're gonna take this to a potential customer. And if that is gonna be a problem with the customer, that's not meeting our need. So I guess I need to find a way to make the potential customer comfortable, more comfortable. So if they're concerned about that, I'm concerned about that, because why are we doing this other?
We think that this will open it up to a lot of the businesses that are coming in. That we are not able to respond to now, but the experts.
Well, I would definitely say that. I think being mindful of what, we want advanced manufacturing. We, you know, say that's target industry, we want also to grow life sizes. But we don't want smoke stacked there. So we, we don't want any of those things. And if you open it up to, you know, if you open up to medium and heavy manufacturing, that's exactly what you're gonna get. So if you stay with light manufacturing, you're not limiting a particular industry from coming to that area. But with certain, you know, caveats, you're not, not letting the raw materials come in. You're still getting everything you need in a, in, in, in our zoning and still being able to accommodate for growth at the same time. We're not gonna be able to give a company in and everything they want. And we're not trying to put ourselves in a position that we're gonna change our code every time one particular company wants or needs anything. But we're also trying to just be mindful that we don't see ourselves back in the same position next year and year after year. On that.
I see two guardrails, and maybe we only need the final one, because that's what we really care about. But if you feel that the predominantly needs to be in there in the beginning, and in another six months, we find that they're saying that's keeping people away, that would be something, so.
So I think, if I, I'm sorry to respond to that, if that's okay, councilmember defender. So I think, yes, and, you know, you are collectively now with the feedback from our subject matter experts establishing what you want, which is not a hundred percent gonna align with what pathways or spark or others may want. I mean, and again, they've been taking that approach all along, but they've been recruiting businesses that did not meet, meet the existing U D O standards. So there is still the possibility that after you do amendments to the GO district, that they could want to recruit businesses that don't meet those requirements. But we need to collectively be on the same page, that we're not gonna be able to accept everybody they necessarily want to bring. I think that our staff has done a really good job in listening to them and presenting you something that'll open that up to give them many more opportunities to bring industries. But I think we need to be very careful once you do this, because they will continue to be in your ear. They're both fairly aggressive about what they want to see done, and I appreciate that, their business. But I think it's important that, that you all together on what you adopt now and just go forward recognizing there are gonna be things they want to ask for that are just not gonna be allowed. And we want to be very careful about circling back every time they reach out to say, oh, we really wanted this company, but it doesn't fit. Thank you, councilmember defender, and then councilmember.
Well, and it kind of is, follows up to what you just said. If they were to, if they were to recruit a company that doesn't exactly align with the light manufacturing, can they come before us with a rezoning request? Asking for an exception?
So that is a conversation that I would want to pull Frank into, because typically with our conditional rezonings, we're prohibiting uses, you're not adding uses, and use variances are prohibited by general statute. So it's this little gray area, you can't open up things with conditional rezonings, but I would want to have that discussion with Frank before we start doing that.
So with the, with our new, with this new definition, would it allow the assembly of solar panels?
We would have some questions for them, just to make sure, you know, vibration with metal, you know, how that operation works, but potentially yes. And I do, we only have a short period of time, so I want to get to these other potential amendments so I can get a very quick feel from council on some of them. So I'm gonna run through it very quickly because of time. But in opening up the permitted uses on the corridor, staff took a look at what potential impacts there could be, particularly considering that we have residential next to industrial in many places. And then trying to learn from some of the things that we've seen since implementing the district.
Michelle, before you go, councilmember, if I have a question, you can ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the previous slide with the definition of light manufacturing, wouldn't it be sufficient just to say that, just to make some, like right here where it says building in noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare and vibration, wouldn't it be sufficient just to add like toxic chemical, toxic chemical production, runoff, et cetera? And then, I mean, because, like, I don't, I, I am not sure exactly why would we care what the materials, like what they're assembling there as long as to Donna's concern, if they're, I mean, no matter what it, I don't care what they're using, if there's some kind of toxic runoff, like we don't want it anyway. So just, that would be my suggestion, would be to add just some further restrictions there about environmental, environmental hazards. And then to me, we can do away with predominantly from previously prepared materials.
Yeah, let me give that some thought. There is under the potential tax amendments, one of the things we're recommending is no outdoor storage. So combining those, I, I think there could be some opportunity there, because when you deal, start dealing with raw materials, you tend to often have more outdoor storage. So if you're limiting that as well, potentially we could open it up. Okay, so I'm gonna go through all of these really quick and then look for some feedback, because it is twelve twenty-one and I know everyone wants to get out of here at twelve thirty. So the first one was prohibiting light manufacturing performing on a major or minor thoroughfare as an alternative. It would be allowed to locate their search of architectural standards, but again, this is going back to the vision of the corridor and that one hundred thousand square foot large manufacturing building when you're driving down the corridor and you're seeing a multifamily development of restaurants, weight competitions or whatever it may be. It very much disrupts the streetscape. And I think you're seeing that with pathway triangle right now, because the front fiddle that you have yet to come in. But with some additional architectural standards, we think that could be mitigated. The second one would be prohibiting outdoor storage and requiring all functions to be conducted entirely within the building. We do want to, and I know this one might be a little bit of a sensitive topic for council, but we want to take the opportunity to look at our street yard buffer requirements with the setbacks of some of the buildings along the corridor. This is one where as the corridor had filled out and that street yard landscaping is yet to go in, worried about those trees growing into the building when the trees do go in. Those buildings are very close to the road, so looking at understory trees, shrubs, possibilities of moving things around a little bit. And we want to take a look at that and see if it adds some more flexibility there. Not to reduce any landscaping, but just want to take a look at that. Some things with the loading areas, again, this is really trying to be sensitive to the multifamily in particular in the area and looking out for the future residents. So some additional screening and design requirements for those loading areas, requiring those loading areas to be internally located. Right now with pathway triangle, you have two bio manufacturing buildings. Each of them have twelve loading bays on the back. And just on the other side of that property line is a multifamily development. So it's not just the appearance of those residents, of those loading bays, it's the activity of the trucks coming out of the loading, loading that occurs. So we're trying to protect against that happening and in the future. And then again, if council wishes, you could consider limiting the number of loading bays. We are recommending that a sound study be upfront, so when you look at that definition of light manufacturing, we're talking about sound, vibration, all that stuff being enclosed entirely within the building. As opposed to dealing with something from the district's standpoint, there's an opportunity to have a sound study done as part of that site plan building permit review process to make sure that the sound is gonna be contained within the building. And you could require soundproofing, just like we do for the multifamily along the corridor, if that were to be an issue. We are seeing a lot of rooftop equipment, and we have heard that a lot more rooftop equipment is yet to come when actual tenants are identified. So suggesting requiring parapets or roof walls for those. Recommending that we prohibit the use of shared buffers between the industrial and residential. Again, we were originally thinking we were gonna have office next to residential, now we're mixing industrial and residential. We have had at least one that's made use of the flexibility in the code to do a shared buffer. But that limits the screening, the landscaping between those types of uses, and we can go through putting industrial next to residential. Having that full screen is really unfortunate. And then whatever we do, because of the new legislation and Senate Bill three eighty-two, any amendments that we make, and I think it's the right thing to do anyways in this case, will need to be based on site plans committed after this date the rule apply to, so that we're not making any of the existing buildings. And then we can have existing standards that we say, including a large red hazardous materials that aren't permitted right now because of the. I ran through that very quick, I took some more time on the why on some of those, but.
How do you want feedback on this?
Well, I would support, I would support it as a whole, but I know that infrastructure and the noise attenuation are key and, you know, factors that we need to be mindful of because of the adjacent residential component as well as the traffic. And the weight of trucks do destroy roads quickly. And I know we do not do the design standards for an industrial road. And that is a beautiful road right now, but I don't want that to be an incumbent to the development. But we have very problems in how trucks can move quickly in issue. And that would probably be, probably interest in those, that heat, weather, and just state, for the power bill. Now, state roads that receive power bill funds.
So I'm generally favoring light manufacturing, all the changes you were saying in regards to the amendments. Turn off that, we get to two, five, six, seven, three, four.
I think what would be helpful is if, for example, you don't support one, three, four, and six, I'm kinda like. Then that, that, sharing that information with staff, copying myself and Giselle would be helpful to determine if that's something that we need to, you know, circle back with before this were to go to P C B and then ultimately come back to you.
It'd be great to bring something to you that would be close to what you're looking for, so we can minimize that time and expedite some changes.
I'm sorry, say that over again, Michelle, please.
I said it'd be great to get your feedback, so that when we do bring something forward to you, it aligns with what council would like to see, and we could expedite it going through the town council review process and get some changes into place sooner rather than later. So yes, feedback, please.
Respectfully, he is one of seven, so just because he doesn't like one, doesn't mean he's a six person, right, fine?
It needs to be a group effort, because someone's gotta rat it out for one of us, whether that's me, or me, or me.
So Green, I think if we hear it from one person, but we don't hear concerns from others, we'll certainly then perhaps follow up and share with the group. Here's what we've gotten back, and if you would like to respond to that, we can do that. Or we could do a quick session in an upcoming meeting to maintain transparency of that discussion. Councilmember, why?
Yeah, first of all, I thought that there was some kind of concern about us hearing each other and discussions outside of media. So can, can we just copy the whole council on, and like I tried to do it, I just thought.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make the one point on number three, which is I don't have a ton of sympathy for people that knew the existing street yard buffer requirements and knew that they were gonna have to plant trees and didn't make allowances for that when they were putting their L Ds in. So I'm gonna be solidly against amendment three.
Alright, so I think that's, that's your primary homework, is any feedback particularly related to potential amendments. So there must be people that's moving. And our goal is to get these changes done as efficiently as possible in the interest of our stakeholders and also of the community as a whole. Beyond that, we will have much to do Tuesday night, that will be a time that we are not sure to be drawn before Tuesday night, so we could have a quick follow-up on this. Other than that, we will plan on circling back to you with some of these topics at a February eleventh meeting. We'll be back to the accounting gentleman's position in the combination of the budget and finance department. And then we will also likely use that work session to go through the more detailed F Y two.
Could we avoid loudly packing up while he is literally still speaking? I would appreciate that.
I'm not feeling good.
Talking about you.
I am not feeling good.
I'm not talking about you.
I am packing.
So that, that's where we're going forward. So for right now, your lunches are here, they are labeled with your name. Please make sure you take your lunch, so everybody else gets what they asked for. And then we will head to the bus and pack up. We are headed to Blowing Rock. The mayor of Blowing Rock is ready apparently to meet us for what I'm told is a one hour tour. And then we will be on the bus headed home. Other than that, you're free to pack up, head to the bus, and we will be right behind you as we pick this up.
Do you have to counsel real quick?
Keep the cards with you, we'll do that on the bus once we leave Blowing Rock, so as to not take too much time.
Coming up, councilmember, thank you very much to staff for arranging this. Thank you to fellow councilmembers and all the preparation that went into this. We really appreciate it, all your time, had some great discussions, thank you all very much. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Brown has a motion, councilmember Biden has a second, all those.
Sorry, it must be Mr. Green.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very none, that carries a minutes late, seven zero, three one, retreat is adjourned, thank you all very much.
Oh, you need to say this somewhere. One job's okay. Alright, I'm a little bit.
Thanks for everything this weekend.